That's at six. Good evening. I am Joseph Pereira, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It is 6:00 PM on Thursday, August 15th, 2024. We are meeting in one government center in the first-floor hearing room. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices by Fall River Government TV, Greg Salvador, recording both video and audio versions. If anyone desires to make an audio/video or combination recording thereof, please notify me and I shall make an announcement to the public of your intention. There hearing none. Our recording secretary this evening is Nina Kruger, sitting to my immediate right. Present this evening are permanent members John Frank, who is our Vice Chairman, James Calkins, our clerk, Dan DePere, and also seated this evening is alternate member Eric Kelly. With us also this evening is Mr. Dan Aguirre, seated to my far left. He is the Director of Engineering and Planning. Nina, have all petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the ZBA and Massachusetts General Law 48 as amended?
Yes.
I hereby declare the August 15th, 2024 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for all such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including petitioners, abutters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to a petition, that your presentation be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chair. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, a petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this is the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board's authority exists pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the Ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not attorneys and not competent to give legal advice. The actions taken by this Board have a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan review. A copy of the ordinance is available at the City Clerk's office or from the Planning Department. I remind everyone that the Building Inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you have been directed here this evening because the Building Inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18 mandates that all multiple-member boards develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizens' input on zoning board-specific matters at the end of this meeting. There is a sign-up sheet at the table outside the doors to this room. I disclose that the official copy of the City of Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the City Clerk's office and that one cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. Thank you and welcome everyone here this evening. Let's jump right in. We have a very crowded agenda. Old Business, Item Number 01, Jason Cody, care of Attorney Peter Serrino, 105 Pittman Street, MAP J19, Lot 65. The applicant seeks a special permit to add three residential units to the existing four-unit apartment building. The applicant also seeks a special permit to maintain the existing off-street parking layout, modified side, no, I'm sorry, modified aisle width and number of spaces required. The applicant also seeks a special permit to increase the pre-existing non-conforming lot coverage from 40% to 82%. Additionally, the petitioner seeks a variance to reduce the minimum front and rear setbacks from 30 feet to 10 feet, the minimum side yard setbacks from 20 feet to 14 feet, and an A2 apartment zoning district per submitted plans. This is item was tabled from the July 18th meeting until this evening. Counselor, good evening.
Correct. Good evening. My name is Peter Serrino. I represent the petitioner, Jason Cody, in this matter. We appeared before the Board on July 18th. We heard the Board's comments, took them seriously, and as Mr. Pereira just read into the record, the prior requests for relief were much more significant than the plan that's before you. So to highlight the changes, I'd like to draw the Board's attention that, number one, we've gone to a duplex concept as opposed to a triplex. What that's done, I think, for this project is to eliminate the questions of site circulation and aisle width within the parcel. The impervious area has been lowered from that, what you just read, and the proposal right now is 60% down from what it was last meeting, and that's again as a result of removing the parking area behind the proposed addition. The proposed addition in the duplex style provides for three off-street parking spaces for each unit, one garage space under each unit, as well as two off-street parking spaces in asphalt driveways. In addition to the setback has been improved, we're now asking for a 12-foot waiver. So I think the front yard would be Pittman Street, and so when you look at the rear yard being Alden Street, the dimension shown by Mr. Tallman is 18 feet. The requirement in the district is 30 feet. So as a result, really where we're at right now is, I think we've eliminated the traffic flow concerns. We've bettered the questions surrounding the impervious area. We have reduced the number of units and our density. We've provided sufficient off-street parking to support the proposal. So I would submit to the Board that this plan before you is entirely responsive to the questions voiced last time, and I'm happy to answer any further questions about the new design. Mr. Tallman's also here to answer any questions that the Board should have.
Okay. Thank you very much. So as I understand it, rather than the parking layout that we had previously, now we've got the parking for the duplexes either under or in front of each of the duplexions?
That is correct, yes.
So there's three for each one?
Yes, there are two in the driveway and then one under in the garage.
Okay. So parking has not changed for the other units at this point, the other units on the property?
That is correct.
Peter, two additional parking spaces have been added.
Okay, so that is incorrect. I am incorrect.
Okay.
Jeff, do you want to?
And Jeff, just please identify yourself with the record.
Jeff Tallman, Northeast Engineers and Consultants. There are two parking spots that run parallel to Marino Street, labeled with a docked one and the existing ones. One to the, I guess, east and one towards the west. The one to the west would basically be slightly adjacent to the deck of the new structure being constructed. And then the other one's further up near the walkway to the existing structure.
So it's parallel parking on the other side of the sidewalk?
Correct.
Questions from the Board?
So how many, how many parking places are we looking at here? I see 11114.
So?
Do we have?
Yeah, you have four, well, six exterior and two interior in the garages for the existing structure, and then six more, two in the driveways and one in the garages for the new structure.
So where you have four in a circle, where it says existing concrete driveway, I only see three spaces there.
Three in a row, and then there's one under the existing roof. It's kind of stacked parking, but that is an existing condition that does exist.
And the garage is not going to be used for parking?
This is one underneath.
That's one. Gotcha. No, this is the one that I was missing. My client's indicating, yes, Mr. Pereira, the garage can't house a car.
Can, but is it designated for one of the apartments to use that garage?
Yeah. How many spaces will we lose on Alden Street with the creation of those two driveways?
Zero.
Zero? Why?
There's no parking on that side.
There's no parking.
And we are creating one new on-street parking spot on Marino Street. Where we're installing is an existing curb cut. We're putting in a curb in for that end.
Okay.
Any other questions? I mean, for me, it's a lot. Thanks for getting rid of the pergola, by the way. It was too cute. Jiu-jitsu.
Understood.
Okay. Anyone else?
So we have eight for the four.
Correct.
And then three for the new two, each.
Six, yes.
Yeah, six total.
What's the unit size on the fourth family?
Meaning how many bedrooms are in the unit? Just go over that, James.
The two in the front is three bedrooms.
Meaning facing Pittman Street, so like up here?
Yeah, three bedrooms.
Okay.
The top one has four, and the one underneath has one.
Okay.
So two three bedrooms, one four bedroom, and one one bedroom.
Eleven, yeah.
Okay.
Eight bedrooms, eight parking spaces. Miraculous.
It's like one of them, one of the closets.
That existing condition does have six parking spaces now. So we're standing through the next.
Thank you, Jeff. Is that it from the Board right now? I'm going to go to the general public. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak on behalf or in support of this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'm to the Board, David Asser, 326 Pine Street, Fall River. I'm familiar with this particular project only because I had done the title for Mr. Cody. The situation, Attorney Serrino has done a good job outlining what the reasons for the variance in special permits are. There's part of the history of it is this was once a dairy. There was a barn. The barn's down. You've got some undeveloped land on the property. This has been the ancestral home for Mr. Cody and his family for many years. The addition of these two units now would be using some of the land that was being left undeveloped and vacant. It's in the A2 district, which is always a very nuanced district in the area. There are no conforming lots that exist, and it's required for anyone looking to develop their property to come before the Board to seek relief. And maybe this is one of the reasons why the A2 district should maybe be brought before the Planning Board or the City Council to get, maybe have it developed a little bit more. But in terms of this particular project and where it's situated, I would submit that it's not an unreasonable request for this Board to grant relief. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? There hearing none. I turn back to the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I find that there's been substantial improvement from the previously submitted proposal and find that it would not be substantially more detrimental to the area.
You packaging them both together?
Yes.
Okay. So there is a, if everybody could please silence their cell phones, thank you. I'm sure I didn't silence mine, so I'll do that in a minute. You just reminded me. So the motion is that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and also moving for approval. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. They're here.
The only thing I would amend, I would like to amend is no further subdivision.
Are you amenable to that friendly amendment?
And the applicant is as well, just for the record.
Okay, very good. And on the second, we're good with that?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Then on the motion, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Chairman Pereira, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work on this. Thank you for the changes.
Thank you.
It's be done.
What's that?
I thought that was just for the special permit. What about the variance?
It was for the special permit.
So it was the special permit. Sit down. Come on back.
I don't think.
No, he can't.
I thought you said both together. That's what you asked him. I thought, you know, I thought the question was.
Both parts of the bifurcated vote.
But I thought the argument was that a variance is not.
Bifurcated vote on the special permit, variance stands by itself.
Expansion of existing non-conforming structure, but they want to grant it.
Okay.
Then on the variance, what are our wishes?
Move approval. Do we need more type approval on that?
Nope.
Review.
Move to approve the variance, which is in, which is.
And I think it's on the variance that we need no further subdivision.
Either way, we can, we can move it either way. Reduction, so that's reduction in minimum front rear setback from 30 feet to 10 feet, which actually I thought came down to 18 feet.
No, no, per plan.
Per plan.
That description is from the first plan.
From the first here.
Yeah, correct.
In accordance with the plan.
We have a second on that motion?
Second.
Very good. We have a second on the motion. No discussion. Then on the motion, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Chairman Pereira, yes.
Thank you all.
I'll see you later. New Business, Item Number One, Storage CAP, Fall River Plymouth LP, care of Attorney Thomas P. Colore, 288 Plymouth Avenue, MAP I-19, Lot 9. The applicant seeks a variance to allow the use of open area in the rear of the property for open storage of motor vehicles, boats, RVs, campers, and to allow the petitioner to lease a portion of the outdoor storage area to an abutter. The applicant also seeks a special permit to remove the existing parking spaces within the rear of the property per submitted plans. The applicant is also seeking a special permit to erect a 404-square-foot wall sign on the north side of the building pursuant to 86-451N3 and 86-454. Additionally, the petitioner seeks a special permit to waive parking requirements. The property is located in MD Medical Zoning District. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Attorney Thomas Colore. On behalf of the applicant, with me tonight is Ira Katz, one of the owners of the property. As this Board may recall, we were before you in, I think, the fall of 2021, where we secured a variance to convert the existing structure to indoor climate-controlled storage facility. This is in a medical district. Storage is not in a, excuse me, in a use that is allowed as a matter of right, and that was the reason for the requested variance. I'm sure most of you, all of you are familiar with this property. It was the property that used to have LaserGate and a number of different businesses in there. It was fairly rundown, tired to say the least. The new owners came in, invested a substantial sum of money in the property, and I would suggest to the Board did a tremendous job cleaning this property up and so it's no longer an eyesore and I would suggest is an asset to the city. We're here before the Board tonight because we want to expand for three reasons. One, to expand the storage use. Currently, it's all interior storage. There are two plans. I think the plan that's before you may be the one for the sign. But there's an area in the, what I'll call the rear of the property or on the easterly side of the property that we're looking to repurpose some unused parking spaces or traditionally typically unused parking spaces for purposes of outdoor storage.
Attorney Paul, if I can stop you for a minute. Nina, can you put up the second plan? It shows the areas that they're changing. Sheet two, if it's in there. It's a little bit easier to understand. Yeah, there's a second sheet to it. That explains which areas they want to change. It's a little bit easier.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it.
You guys have it on your iPads.
Okay.
I think if you look at the same image, but just scroll once you're looking at the original. I think the Board can see it on their, on their plans.
If we, if we can't, Nina, we'll just have the petitioner point it out in case anybody in the audience is interested.
As long as you can all see it on your iPads. For now, I think we're okay. But we should get it up at some point. Or if anybody wants to look at it, they can come up.
Yeah, you've got the, you've got the full size there.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor.
Do you want to proceed?
Yes, please.
Chairman, thank you. So again, to the, I guess that would be the, figure out exactly which direction. But on the, on the rear of the existing building, there is, it's identified as Area B on the plan. And that's the area that's being proposed for outdoor storage to be utilized by the existing storage facility. This area is already fenced off and secured. There's outdoor cameras, similar to when you gain access into the building. People will use like a keypad or a, like a badge to get in. So they know everybody that comes in and out of the property. Again, it's on surveillance 24 hours a day, seven days per week. Again, these parking spaces and the parking really for a use like this, there's really not a high demand. So this has kind of been a open or dead space for the applicant, and they would obviously like to make the best and use, best and fullest use of their property. And then on the plan, I can see it's up on the screen now, that's labeled as A. This is situated to the rear of the ABC Supply building. This has been an area that ABC Supply has stored materials for quite a number of years. The applicant actually leases this to ABC Supply. But again, once we were coming in for this requested relief, we realized that, again, this is probably constitute outdoor storage by ABC on the applicant's property. So we're asking for the variance as well to allow that on the outdoor storage that's been there for a considerable period of time. So that's the variance relief that we're requesting. I would suggest to this Board that this is not something that would be detrimental to the neighborhood. This is a highly commercial, kind of industrialized area. It's abutted on one side by 195. The proposed outdoor storage area to be utilized by the applicant is pretty much screened from surrounding streets and businesses. You maybe, if you wrench your neck as you're driving by 195, heading, headed towards the Cape, if you wrench your neck to the right, you may see it very quickly. But I would suggest that this isn't going to be something that is going to be visible from the surrounding neighborhood and people out on the, on the streets. Because we will be repurposing these parking spaces for the outdoor storage, we no longer comply with the parking requirements per the bylaw. Again, I would suggest to the Board that the parking that's, would be left over is certainly more than adequate for this proposed use. I think if you ever go buy this property at any time of day, you would see that there are a number of parking spaces that remain vacant, and losing these or repurposing these parking spaces would not be, cause any kind of detriment to the use of the property and certainly would not impact any of the neighboring properties. And then last special permit that we're asking for is for the construction of a sign on the northerly side of the building out, that faces out along Route 195. If the Board may recall, there were a number of signs that were on this building. It was kind of littered around one of its faces for a number of years. One of the things that this applicant, once they took over this property, was committed to was cleaning up this property. This is an image of the property before they took over. So they have a sign that currently faces out at Plymouth Avenue, and they want to add this additional sign along 195, which again, we would suggest certainly is not going to have any kind of negative impact around, on the surrounding neighborhood. I do have some older images as well of the property. If the Board would like me to share these with you, just so you can kind of refresh your recollection as to what this property looked like before the applicant, before the applicant took over. You'll see that in some of these photographs, you can see that there were some trailers parked along the rear of the property. All of that has been cleaned up. Again, there's been significant work that's been undertaken by the applicant. I know these pictures I pass out are all different if people just want to pass them down. But again, I would suggest to the Board that the current owners are operating a first-class business. They've, like I said, they've invested substantial sum of money in this property, and they are just asking for some further relief, which we would suggest certainly is not going to be a detriment at all, and I would suggest would be an asset to the city to provide its residents with a place, a secure place where they can store, you know, recreational vehicles, boats, things of that nature, outside, again, in a secure facility. Obviously, if the Board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
My first question is the obvious one. How would you characterize your hardship with the variance?
In this, I think we have, again, this is a use variance, right? So I'm not necessarily looking for relief based on shape, soil conditions, or topography. I mean, we're asking for a use to be allowed that's not allowed as a matter of right, which this Zoning Board certainly has the right to grant. If you take a look at the surrounding neighborhood here, where we've got, you know, a building supply company, you know, fast food restaurant, a lot of what I would call quasi kind of industrial, commercial uses surrounding this property. I think what's being proposed is very much in tune with the surrounding neighborhood. And again, you've got the highway that abuts along a significant portion of this property. I think a literal interpretation or a literal enforcement of the bylaw would deprive this applicant of the best in use, best and highest use of the property.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board, comments?
Yeah, we deal with 33 spaces still, the 21 and the 12.
I think it leaves it with 60.
Yeah.
Quite a bit more.
Forgive me. I did have that up. Mr. Calkins, and I meant to, yeah, so it shows 98 spaces would be required and 61 spaces. Now, forgive me. We're going to have to hold 98.
This is how many we currently have?
No, that's proposed. So there are 98 existing spaces.
Right.
And at the time, we didn't.
Oh, I see, yeah.
You're getting rid of 24, 13. I think that's all I see.
Yeah.
The plan says being spaces to be removed. I see 24 and 13.
Approximately, yeah.
Well, do you have approximately or?
Well, no, I don't have that in front of me.
So I mean, the spaces that are being showed as being removed are 21, 12.
Those are new spaces, the 21 and the 12.
Right, those are going to be the storage spaces. And then there's 13 that are being removed.
While you're looking through that, let me ask this. Since you're talking about storing RVs, boats, et cetera, how large are these parking spaces? Are you just keeping the same spaces and?
We enlarged them for certain vehicles. Some are 10 feet wide, some are longer. We're not, we're limiting it to certain vehicles to fit in certain spaces. Can't put a motorhome in an eight-foot space.
So, yeah, in the parking calculation, Mr. Chairman, it does show 61, 9 by 18. There were some 10 by 25 spaces. Those are the 20. And the new ones, the ones that are being added, the 25 spaces and the 12 spaces, there's 25 that are 10 by 25 and 12 that are 10 by 20.
I'm sorry, I missed a little bit of what he asked you about the intent, what to be stored outside. He said RVs.
Right?
Yes, RVs.
RVs, boats. It's mostly going to be like vehicle storage that's oftentimes too large and for people's yards or often it might violate, you know, a homeowner association. Yes.
All registered vehicles?
Yes.
Well, that's what I'm asking. It doesn't say that.
Yes.
Boats will be on stands or trailers?
Yes.
Trailers.
On trailers.
Yeah, that's an important question. So strictly on trailers, you're not going to allow on-stand parking? People aren't going to be able to?
Yeah.
No working on vehicles?
No.
No.
Well, I know that's what you're, that doesn't mean somebody's not going to go do it, right?
Right, I mean, I think you know, uh, throughout, well, you've seen what I've done. I always do what I say I'm going to do. And no, there is no construction, no working in the back, nothing like that.
Nobody live in there?
No, in fact, let me tell you, I was told today by Carter's that the place has been awesome and, um, you know, it takes a while to clean out everything. We don't have any, uh, no issues anymore. And the police, by the way, have been going through our buildings, uh, our parking lot daily, so it's been really good.
And I know that's an issue that's happened at a number of self-storage facilities. And, and this is something I had discussed with, uh, Ira and his partner when they, um, they reached back out to me about this plan. And that was something we discussed. And, and they're extremely vigilant on that and they do not allow that to occur.
Any other questions from the board before we go to the public?
Just a couple of other questions if I could ask.
Please.
A maximum total of thirty-six vehicles is what you're proposing.
Correct.
Only parked within the designated spaces.
Only within that designated area. Yes.
Nothing on stands, nothing to exceed the length of the space.
Correct. Correct, yeah. We've got to make sure we keep that line of travel clear in case people need to get their vehicles in and out.
Yeah, because you've got, I mean, there's a forty-three foot aisle with, um, I was never good at backing up a trailer myself, so I, I wouldn't attempt it. But it can get tight, I guess, but if they know what they're doing, they should be okay.
And the leased space to ABC is going to be?
Where?
So that's where designated as the area that's shown as A.
So that's already your property, okay.
That, that is their property. That's something that ABC has been utilizing for, um.
Is it only accessed through ABC's property or will it be accessed as well through here?
No, it's fenced in and the only opening is off of ABC.
And then how about that existing brick building? I know that's still been floating around with how that gets used.
We're not, have no plans in the future to use that building. It's, um, it's not in good shape.
Okay. You just, you just said thirty, no, hang on. You just said thirty-six spaces.
I'm counting twenty-one, twelve, and three.
Oh, yeah, the three over there. Okay. Missed the three.
Which, maybe I'm missing one because the, the parking schedule says twenty-five, so twenty-one plus three is twenty-four plus twelve. Oh, sorry, there's that one space I see it, next to the brick building.
Which is outside the gate.
Oh, yeah.
No.
Oh, no, you can't go gates below that.
Against that building, yeah. So sorry, it's twenty, thirty-seven spaces, correct? Yeah, thirty-seven spaces.
Talk to us about the sign, please.
That's a separate. So there was a, there was a detail that was submitted, um, showing what the sign is going to look like. Um, it's, it's just store space with the lock.
Is it basically the same as the sign that's on the front of the building?
Identical.
And it falls within that already?
Okay. The T A that's already up there.
Square that's already there, yeah.
Non-illumin, non-illuminated, I mean, uh, LED. It's not a, it's not a message board. It doesn't switch.
No, it's not a message board, does not switch. Right, the same that's on the, on what I'll call the front of the building.
Okay. Anyone here in the audience this evening to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone to speak in opposition? All right. I'm doing three things at once. We were in the allowed size, uh, for that sign. It's a total of four hundred and four square feet, correct?
Yes. Yes, four hundred and four square feet on the sign.
I guess, isn't that the reason we have it as a variance?
It's not a variance.
Any si, any special? Any sign can be waived by a special permit.
It's special per, the only variance is, is in regard to use, uh, as the property is a storage facility.
And as the previous use, the previous relief restricted the use to only that.
Restricted.
You have to, anything that requires a variance.
So we have a special permit, which is an odd one, to reduce the size of the parking, which is parking, that becomes kind of an odd one, doesn't it?
You can handle it in the, you can handle it in the variance.
We're, we're flipping it one way or the other. We're taking away parking spaces that are available for customers with the people who are storing our customers.
Right.
Right.
You have over sixty parking places. How many storage units are there inside there? Three hundred?
We get about twenty people a day.
Yeah.
And that's throughout the whole day.
Yeah.
I don't think there's an issue with sixty spaces for the interior use of that building.
Okay.
But we haven't heard from the audience yet, so.
No, we've gone to the audience.
Oh, we did, yeah.
Uh, the only one with favorable, he did ask for all of them.
So is this?
Yeah.
He did ask if there was anyone opposed as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My hearing.
Just ask again if you want. He's going to be on the safe side.
Did I miss somebody in favor? I don't think so. Anyone against?
Speak now, for a roll of your piece.
You're going to be a JP now or?
Tommy, has parcel A ever been contemplated to subdivide and convey to ABC or they're just not interested in buying or they're not interested in selling?
I don't, I don't think that they've had those discussions. Um, I, I don't, I don't think that's something that they're interested in doing. Again, I, I, they don't know, you know, if something happened to ABC, they move down, maybe they would have some use for that property at that point. I think they would like to retain that.
They leased their building. They don't own the building.
Oh, all right.
But, but understand then that the use of parcel A will be specific to ABC Supply.
Understood.
Not, not the next tenant of that building.
Understood.
They've been there for twenty-something years. They have no plans of moving out.
That's why I'm surprised they didn't, because they did acquire the piece across Lowell.
They did.
They own that one, so that's why I'm surprised they wouldn't want to acquire this one.
This is, um, three, we're looking at three separate votes here.
Three separate votes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, uh, grant the, uh, special permit for the relief from parking.
And that it is not?
It is not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have, uh, motion and second, discussion on the motion. They're hearing none. Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
John Frank.
Yes.
And Chairman Prairie, yes.
I'll also make a motion for the special permit to allow for the sign, four hundred, uh, four hundred and four square foot sign as, uh, shown on the.
Plan received on July eighth, twenty twenty-four.
In compliance with all subsection eighty-six, four, fifty-one. That's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, discussion on the motion. They're hearing none. Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
John Frank.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. That leaves us with the variance.
And as far as the variance go, I will make a motion to grant the variance for outdoor storage with the conditions that we discussed. No more than thirty-seven spaces in the back. All vehicles.
To fit within the designated parking.
But I don't, vehicles is the right word, but.
All units.
All, um, items to be stored.
All stored items.
No, hang on. They are vehicles. You've got a boat on a trailer.
Yeah.
You've got an RV, camper, that type of thing. They're vehicles.
Registered.
Because if we open it up.
Yeah, registered, licensed, and insured.
Next thing you know, there's going to be pallets, pallets of stuff back there. Right.
So he's not going to put a shed on the trailer back there.
This is on, this is on parcel B.
It's called a micro house.
Oh, parcel B.
Yep.
No exterior work to be done on vehicles on site.
Mm-hmm. No residences within vehicles on site.
There's no, no residential use at all in this. Um, and parcel A will only be conveyed and leased to ABC Supply.
ABC Building Supplies, yeah.
Any change in that, you have to come back in front of us.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
I'll second.
That's the motion with a second discussion on that. Do we get it all? John Frank.
Yes.
Jim Calkins. Dan DePere.
Yes.
Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes.
Great, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very, very much.
Have a good trip back to windy city.
Tight town.
Sorry, I didn't mean to throw.
Oh, fuck you.
Item number two, Gabi Rami, I hope I pronounced it correctly.
Gabi Rahmi.
Gabi, oh gee. Gharav attorney, David M. Assad. I remember that name. Four twelve, uh, four twelve, six twelve, six fourteen Alden Street, map, J twenty-eight lot, uh, J two, yeah, J twenty. Lot fifty-nine. The applicant seeks a variance, special permit to develop two single-bedroom apartments above a pre-existing, non-conforming garage. The existing four-stall garage will be utilized for rental or vehicle storage purposes. Additionally, the petition is, is requesting a special permit to waive parking requirements. Uh, one parking space per unit will be added to the existing four, uh, four parking spaces designated for the four-family building located on the lot. The property is situated in an A-two apartment zoning district. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm David Assad. I'm an attorney licensed to practice in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I maintain offices at three twenty-six Pine Street in the city of Fall River. Uh, what I have in my possession this evening is a request to table this matter to the next meeting. Even though in my petition numbered paragraph seven, I said grant such other relief, whether by way of variance or special permit, that may be required or determined to be necessary after my discussions today, uh, which, with Dan Aguiar, that brought some items to my attention that I was unaware of when we filed the variance. I think it may be better for me to clean up, uh, the petition and the plan itself and come back in the September meeting to give you a, uh, complete, comprehensive, uh, and better presentation. Uh, so in that, I have this request to table, and I also have in that request, uh, the owner request that the board exercise its authority to waive the fee for table. So unless you don't want to table it, then we'll go forward with it. In that, I reserve that right, uh, to ask for additional, um, uh, special permits or variances that may be required to go forward.
Members of the board?
I'll make a motion to table it.
That's September nineteenth.
To September nineteenth.
Two separate votes. You can take it as two separate votes, vote to table, and then regarding the fee.
I'll second. I'll second the table move.
All right. On the tabling, uh, John Frank.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Eric Kelly.
Yes.
And Chairman Prairie, yes. And then on the waiving of the fee.
I'll, I'll make a motion to deny waiving of the fee.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, second. So a yes vote on this motion will be a denial of the waiving of the fee. Therefore, on the motion, uh, Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
John Frank.
Yes.
And Chairman Prairie, yes.
Thank you. We'll make the fee payable tomorrow if that's acceptable to the board.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Item number three. Northern Star LLC, Gharav attorney Arthur D. Frank Jr., one sixty-one Rob Way. Map Z zero-three, lot one thirteen. The applicant seeks a variance to construct a nine thousand square foot manufacturing warehouse facility. Waiving lot coverage, front, side, and rear setback requirements in an IP industrial park zoning district. Additionally, the petitioner is requesting a special permit to waive parking requirements for manufacturing.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Director Aguiar, Madam Clerk. For the record, my name is Arthur Frank. I'm a lawyer with Addresses at two oh nine Bedford Street, Fall River, Massachusetts. And I represent Northern Star LLC. Uh, the client has owned this parcel for quite some time. And they've come up with a plan to build a nineteen thousand square foot facility. Uh, at this point, they foresee that they, they will use it either for, uh, manufacturing or warehousing. And that's, that's going to take into account the parking. Uh, they're looking to waive lot coverage and the setbacks in the industrial park district. One of the reasons that they need the variance is that this has proved to be a problematic piece. Uh, the client has told us that they've had some topographical issues, uh, but they've come up with this plan. And, uh, they'll need some, they'll also need the, the parking waiver from thirty-eight spots to thirty-two spots. The lot coverage would go from maximum of seventy to eighty-two. Now, if they, it's interesting enough, if they, if it becomes a warehouse, then I believe they only need, I think that's eleven spaces because you need, you need, um, one for every fifteen hundred square feet up to fifteen thousand. So it's a big, it's a big change in the parking. And I think that satisfies paragraph C of section eighty-six, four forty-five. If there is a peculiarity of the use, which makes usual measures of demand invalid. So if they went to warehousing, they wouldn't need even the thirty-two spots. They would only really need eleven spots. But we're obviously going to be looking for the highest and best tenant for that spot. And if it does become a manufacturing center, the code tells us we need thirty-eight, but we only can fit thirty-two on the lot.
Not knowing what the use is going to be exactly, how did they arrive at the nineteen thousand square feet? Was that just?
The client tells us that when they, uh, ran the numbers for a facility that could, in fact, afford all of the amenities and turn a profit, that's the size of the building they came up with. It's not quite an industry standard, but, uh, that's the most economically feasible building they could put on that site.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer that the, the topography to the, to the west of this, uh, precludes this building from getting any closer to the western property line.
Very familiar with it, yep.
And that's what's pushing it closer to, to Rob Way as well.
Mm-hmm.
The only relief with regards to building on the north side, um, is for the loading dock area. So really, the meat of the setback requirement would really be to Rob Way, which is an odd extension of existing Rob Way, which was a cul-de-sac and wraps up with another T-type of a roadway. So it's a pretty odd roadway layout.
It is.
But I, I think the nineteen thousand about, is about as big as you could get with, with the topography and the shape of this.
Yep, familiar with the lot. This is not the same lot that we just approved the?
This is directly adjacent, directly north of the battery storage, battery storage.
All right.
Kind of out on no man's land, within the industrial park.
Yeah, I honestly, until I went out there to look at the battery storage site, really wasn't even familiar with this corner of the industrial park, so. Uh, that being the case, any other questions from the board at this point? Questions, observations? I turn to the general public. Is there anyone here this evening to speak in support of this petition?
Yes. Excuse me, uh, for the record, uh, my name is Ken Fajola. I'm the executive vice president of Bristol County EBC. Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'd like to, uh, voice my support, uh, for this particular project. What's especially, uh, important I hear from an economic development standpoint is the construction of this nineteen thousand square foot facility. As you may or may not know, the city is quickly running out of available land and available space for businesses to expand in. And the, the construction of this building will certainly needs an additional demand for small businesses that could use of, uh, in the need of warehousing or manufacturing space. As correctly noted by both Mr. Aguiar and the chairman, this is a lot of land that's, uh, challenged geographically by wetlands and by, by slope. And it is abutted directly to the lot by the, the electric, um, battery facility, which was previously approved by the board. So the fact that Rob Way has gone undeveloped for probably close to fifteen or twenty years since its initial construction. In the past ninety days, you have two proposals that have come forward, uh, and actually have exhibited their ability to be developed on challenging parcels of land. If anybody had their druthers, they'd be developing other pieces of land. But now we're trying to make some of these more challenging pieces of land work. And I think this is a perfect use for that. And I'm sure the business community will, um, be very receptive to its construction and as well as its utilization. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Ken. Anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? Very good. Very good. Uh, then I turn back to the board. I will say that, um, I completely agree that this is a perfect case of, um, topography, shape of lot, et cetera, driving the, uh, driving the, um, design. Um, this is, if, if you got by there, you know this is, this is an odd piece of property. So we have for, in front of us, the variance, uh, for coverage, uh, side and rear setbacks, and we have a special permit for reduction in, uh, number of parking spaces by six, according to what's required.
Mr. Chairman would take the special permit, and I don't find it substantially more detrimental, and I move approval of the variance to reduce the number of parking spaces.
You're going to wrap them all together.
And I also find that the?
No, it's, it's not a variance for the reduction of parking spaces.
Well, no.
It's just, yep.
Just do the special permit for the parking.
Special permit first.
I, I.
I'll second that.
Okay. There's a line, the special permit, it is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, uh, and to approve the special permit and reduction of parking comments. They're hearing none. Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
John Frank.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. That leaves us with the variance.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance in accordance with the plan as submitted.
Very good. Motion, do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second that with the amendment of just, uh, no further reduction in parking, keeping it at the thirty-two, even if the?
It's fine.
Use changes.
Absolutely.
Or use is different than what? Thank you. That's my move.
Very good.
Second.
Any other, uh, any other comments? They're hearing none. John Frank.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes.
Thank you.
Counsel. Item number four. Agama de Souza, three eighty-fourth Street, MAP I dash fifteen, lot fifty-one. The applicant seeks a variance to create a mixed-use building with four residential units, uh, and an auto sale showroom. The applicant also proposes a second-story addition waiving zoning requirements in an A-two, uh, apartment zoning district. So. Is the applicant present?
He did call me right before the meeting and say that he was driving from Boston. He said that his ETA was six thirty, though.
Can push him off to the end.
Yeah.
We'll move him to the end.
Sure. Not when he gets here, the end.
The end. Everybody who's here. Uh, item number five. Lena St. Laurent, care of Jeffrey P. Tallman, one sixty-three Lamfor Street, MAP E ten, lot eighteen. The applicant seeking a special permit to construct a ten-by-ten-foot addition at the rear of the pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling pursuant to eighty-six four twenty-six B, waiving lot coverage in an R-eight, single-family zoning district per submitted plans.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jeff Tallman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants. Here representing Lena St. Laurent, the petitioner of the special permit application. Uh, this property is located on the west side of Lamfor Street, um, between Ames and Lawton. Um, it's zoned in the single-family R-eight zoning district. Uh, the lot itself is, exists in non-conforming, uh, due to frontage, has sixty feet of frontage as opposed to the eighty that's, it's required to have, and it has, uh, six thousand square feet as opposed to the eight thousand square feet that it's required to have. Uh, there are three non-conforming structures on the property. Number one sixty-one and one sixty-nine are single-family dwellings, uh, located at the front of the property, and number one sixty-three is a three-family dwelling located at the rear of the property. Um, what the petitioner is looking to do here is simply to build a ten-by-ten addition on the southwest corner of number one sixty-nine, um, Lamfor Street. Um, it would be at the, uh, again, at the southwest corner, um, and it would maintain the existing three-foot side yard setback, uh, that that existing structure has. Um, the addition would result in a one hundred square foot increase in the lot coverage on the site, thereby raising it, uh, by two percent from, uh, fifty-one percent, which has had now to fifty-three overall. Uh, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
What's the ten-by-ten addition going to be?
I, I think it's just, uh, I'm not one hundred percent sure. I think it's just, um, additional, like, kitchen area off the back of the house. Uh, I don't believe it's an extra bedroom or, um, I, I really haven't been told. It's just additional space in the house, though.
You can condition it to be no additional bedrooms.
Is, is that parking now?
There is none.
There is none, right?
There's no parking for this?
No.
Looking from the sky, it, it looks like there might be dirt here. This is where we're talking.
Yeah, but they don't own this lot, they don't own that driveway, lot lines here.
Ah.
Yep.
They may, maybe somebody comes in that way to park, but.
Lot line's right up against the house, so. Yeah, okay.
Sneak in.
Okay.
Well, it's crowded now. I, I have no questions on it at this point. Anyone else? Turn to the general public, please. Anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? It's a quiet one. Anything from engineering, planning?
No, I mean, I would, uh, I would just offer no additional bedrooms and potentially no further subdivision.
Yeah.
As this is getting more and more crowded. I don't, I don't think you would be able to do it with a special permit anyway, because it would no longer be an existing structure, because they're extending it, so I don't think eighty-six four twenty-three B would apply. I don't know what year these homes were built in, but I would just consider.
Probably turn to the century, a little bit after, just judging by the houses.
They have no parking, they're not adding parking, they're not losing parking, so.
Okay. Uh, to the board.
It's all as a variance, Jeff, right? That's the way you put it?
Uh, special permit.
Special permit, not a variance.
All right. The ad, the ad says variance.
No. No, it doesn't.
Oh, I'm reading, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. I'm reading Ludlow Street.
See?
You're fine.
You see too many of these.
Can I make a motion to grant a special permit with the condition that, uh, no additional bedrooms being added and no further subdivision of that lot?
That's good. That's the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion on the motion. They're hearing none on the motion. John Frank.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Eric Kelly.
Yes.
And Chairman Prairie, yes.
Thank you.
Item number six. Ruben Olivera, care of Jeffrey P. Tallman, five twenty-eight High Street, MAP O, O-two, O-O, uh, lot three. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to increase the pre-existing non-conforming lot coverage from forty-eight to seventy-eight percent in an R-four-two family zoning district per submitted plans. Jeffrey?
For the record, Jeff Tallman from, uh, Northeast Engineers and Consultants. Here representing Ruben Olivera, the applicant for the special permit. It's before you. Uh, location of the property is five twenty-eight High Street. It's on the west side of High Street between Prospect and Maple. Um, it's zoned two-family, R-four zoning district. There's an existing, uh, old Victorian-style, single-family dwelling on the property. Um, there's a combination concrete-asphalt driveway located on, uh, existing driveway located on the north side of that, uh, dwelling, and also a in-ground pool with a concrete patio apron surrounding it at the rear of the property. Um, simply what we're looking to do is to remove the existing driveway, um, the front walkway, and the concrete apron patio around the existing pool, keeping the pool in place, and we're going to install a new paver driveway, uh, to be located on the south side, uh, of the existing dwelling, and also extend those pavers around to, uh, connect to a patio apron around the, uh, the pool. Uh, the other addition that we have on here, which does not require relief, is we are proposing to construct a, uh, eight-by-twenty-five-foot, two-hundred-square-foot accessory structure, uh, which would be on the northwest corner of the property. Um, and the reason, um, we're here is, I mean, we are proposing to use pavers, but, um, you know, there are different types of pavers, some are considered pervious, some impervious. Um, even the impervious ones, you do get some drainage that goes through them, uh, so it may look like a substantial increase in lot coverage, but in fact, we're, um, eliminating, uh, entirely impervious material, and we're bringing in, replacing it with material that will, will have some, uh, benefit. But the, uh, the owner didn't want it to be restricted as the type of pavers that he was looking to use on the property, so that's why we're here tonight before you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Um, one, I'm going to direct to you, planning, engineering, regarding the use of pavers. I do see that as better as solid asphalt, but.
So the way the building department interprets lot coverage, so the definition of impervious means impervious, right? You can't, it's not percent impervious, it's either impervious or it's not. So the building inspector has looked at pavers in general as not qualifying as impervious. As Jeff stated, there are different levels of pavers. There are some that are labeled porous pavers, that are the same as being grass. There are some that are just regular, let's say bricks, for instance, that there is some joint and some sand. Sometimes that joint and sand is concrete or mortar, and that would render it to be impervious. So, um, Mr. Tallman is, is proposing it, I believe, without really diving into the numbers, the pavers, you're taking, you're, you're accounting for all of it as being?
As being impervious.
Yeah.
Okay.
So he's technically not asking for you, you to, to make the interpretation that the pavers are pervious.
And you are removing the existing concrete driveway in the northeast corner of the site?
Correct.
Okay. Now, talk to me about the building. You're saying you don't need relief for this building. We're five-point-five feet off the rear lot line, five-point-seven feet off the side lot line?
Yeah, it's, it's a shed.
It's labeled in one spot as accessory structure.
Yep.
And then in your proposed calculations, it's labeled shed.
Oh, yeah.
Which isn't, if it's a poolhouse and it's not a shed, if it's going to have plumbing in it, it's not a shed.
Right.
And should meet the building setbacks.
Okay. I, I, I don't believe it's going to be technically a poolhouse with plumbing inside, um, so I think I would classify it as a shed.
Storage only and, and the condition of precluding it to being connected to water and sewers, okay?
Yep.
Okay. I know you don't know, but you might be back here.
Never say never.
Just don't come back with a forgiveness plea.
I have a history of coming back with the same site multiple times, as you know. The, the wet bar just isn't.
I mean, the owner's done an incredible job on this property.
Yes.
It's beautiful, yeah.
But we can't have someone, at least until February, we can't have somebody living in this accessory structure, as things may change as, as things.
Things may change, yeah.
But, but it clearly doesn't mean setbacks for living quarters, so.
Yep. Okay. Other questions from the board? They're hearing none. In the audience, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here to? Oh, yes.
If I could just say, I, I am the owner.
Oh, okay.
So I just wanted to see if there was to be plumbing on that structure, what would the setbacks have to be? Because that's a shed that was already there, but it was a shed that was destroyed during the fire.
Well, again, there's, there's a difference between a shed and accessory structure. If it's being used to live in or occupy, then it needs to meet the building setbacks for a structure, for, for living space.
Okay.
Big difference, big difference between storage area.
Yep.
Garage, garages have a specific use to it.
So, so just as living space, so the plan is to have a wet bar and a half a shed? So not for someone to live in?
So would a wet bar require water?
Plumbing, sure, yeah.
So that'll be up for the board to decide if they, if they're okay with that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's not going to have a bedroom, bathroom.
No, 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 no. The house is big enough.
That's why I said wet bar. I knew it by the way.
Right. Good catch.
You got a nice pool like that, you gotta have a wet bar, right?
Is the pump in there, the, the stuff for the pool in there, too?
If, that's going to be on the outside.
It's going to be outside.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you for asking that clarification. Appreciate that, and, and offering us that.
I don't know what the building inspector's interpretation will be.
I don't know. I mean.
Take that, needs to be clarified.
Because it wasn't specified here, but.
We don't want to approve something and then have it. Go sideways.
Well, if that's the case, then.
You can grant relief for an accessory structure of that size, and it'll be up to the building inspector to determine the use to for it, but I don't know.
Okay.
I like Mr. Tallman's interpretation better, but.
And the answer to his question is ten feet or, or do we, setback on that? If he, if he, he was asking to comply?
If it's a, if it's considered a shed or a, or a garage, um, then the setbacks that you have are fine. Mr. Tallman's assertion that you don't need relief is, is fine. The building inspector may determine that you need to meet building setbacks if it's to be used for anything other than a shed or a garage.
I'm, I'm.
And so through site plan review, it will, will require a letter from the building inspector that, that he's okay with the use of it.
All right. And otherwise, if there's an approval, it is as an accessory structure.
Yeah.
Okay? Unless you want to preclude, somebody could put it in there to preclude plumbing in the building, but then we know he's going to be back, because he wants to put plumbing in the building. Okay? All right, so, um, I'm sorry, anyone here in opposition? Nobody. To the board. The bastions of section eighty-six.
I'm in favor of the proposal, I just don't know how to word it to cover the situation.
Well?
Where, can, can we just say, uh, we grant approval, uh, as the plan is presented?
How the plan shows, right?
Yeah, it shows it as an accessories.
It's showing as an accessory structure.
Yep.
And then somebody else can decide whether it meets that definition.
It's pretty much it. Because we don't have a full set of plans in front of us that shows plumbing plan, electrical plan, anything else is an accessory structure. So as far as I'm concerned, is, is rakes.
Yeah, it's a shed.
But you're, but you're, you're approving it, the use as an accessory structure. If the building department determines that it doesn't meet the setback requirements for the proposed use, you're not waiving setbacks to what the building inspector may determine are required. For shed or garage.
Correct.
Or barn, whatever you want to call it, the setback shown adequately and the size of it.
Accessory structure is?
He may determine.
Ten feet, right? In this, in this district?
No.
No.
It would be four feet.
Four feet?
Yeah. Six feet off the. Six feet off the house.
So the motion I make then is that we approve the, uh, proposal as submitted.
Is that what he wants to do?
Or variance in accordance with the plan as submitted.
Second.
So it's, it's a special permit?
It's a special permit. It's not a variance.
So it's bifurcated?
So we have to bifurcate the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I find that the, uh, proposal is, will not be more substantially than applicable to the area and move that we approve it in accordance with the plan as submitted.
Okay. Which means as an accessory structure.
Yeah.
Which means as an accessory structure and increasing lot coverage from 48 to 78%, which is the safe way to go, so.
And does that include site plan review? Does that site plan review?
Does this need site plan review?
If you say it does.
I'd say so.
Usually anything that requires this release so that we can ensure that drainage isn't a problem.
Drainage, yeah. I'm gonna put some of the...
It's on a lot line.
They may require something specific in pavers, so, okay. And site plan review. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Eric. Then on the motion, Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Cawkins.
Yes.
John Frank.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. Good luck with that. Beautiful property.
Great job on that.
Wonderful job. Item number seven, Susan Family Trust, care of Jeffrey Tolman, 460 Ludlow Street, map E08, lot 28. The applicant seeks a variance to divide the property into two lots, leaving the existing single-family dwelling at 460 Ludlow Street on a conforming lot, 11,510 square feet. Lot with 99.81 feet of frontage and creating a new 5,100 square foot lot with 50 feet of frontage to construct a new single-family dwelling, waiving lot coverage area, frontage, side yard setbacks, and an R8 single-family zoning district.
Good evening. For the record, Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants here representing Janice Souza, the trustee of the Souza Family Trust. I have along with me John Souza, who's Janice's son. The application here is, we did file for a variance for the property at 460 Ludlow Street. This property is located on the north side of Ludlow, east of Landforce Street, and it's located in the single-family R8 zoning district. As you can see on the plan, there's a conforming single-family dwelling located basically dead smack in the middle of the property. That house was built in 1955 by Bonny Martel, who was Janice Souza's father. Janice, who is the current owner and resides in the house, was born and raised in this house. She's 78 years old. She lives there on her own. At this point, her husband has passed away. Her husband was a former lifelong city municipal employee. When he retired, he was the, actually director of the solid waste, director of solid waste at the incinerator, the old incinerator. So, she's there at 78. She's living off her husband's pension, and it's becoming a burden to maintain property of this size. And she would love to, obviously, given the family history with the house, stay in the house as long as she can. When the land was originally bought by her father, there were three lots here, each equal in size, having about 49.94 feet of frontage up and down Ludlow Street. Again, the house that was built in 1955 was built on the middle lot and left these two other lots on either side. The, to the west, I'm sorry, no, on the east side of the property, there's an existing one stall garage, driveway, and a side entrance into the house. So, as you can see from the layout of the property, she's only really using the middle of the property over to the east, which leaves this west, this large area on the west side of the property, about 50 feet in width, that basically goes unused. And it's becoming a maintenance issue for her to maintain that area. There's an existing stone retaining wall that runs along that west property line that's kind of in disrepair. Some work needs to be done on it as it's falling apart and becoming an issue, given the proximity with the butter on the west side. So, the proposal that we have tonight is to divide the property into two lots, leaving the single-family dwelling, driveway, garage on lot one, which would be a conforming lot in the R8 district, and to create lot two, which would be a non-conforming lot with 50 feet of frontage and an area of 5,100 square feet on which a new single-family dwelling would be built. In addition to frontage and area, we'd also be asking for site setback relief for both the existing and proposed dwellings on that interior lot line that we'd be creating of five feet. New house, the new lot and the new house on the west side, I do not believe would be detrimental to the neighborhood, considering some of other relief that's been granted in this area for different lots on Ludlow Street. Specifically, there's two lots across the street which are smaller than this particular lot that we're proposing at 4,100 square feet and just under 4,200 square feet. And there is also two other lots that, basically the same size as what we have here. So, again, we don't believe this would be a detriment to the neighborhood. So, the hardship that we're dealing here would be the shape of the lot and the location of the house on the lot. And in addition, one other further hardship would be the topography of the property, given the slope of Ludlow Street, how the west side of the house does slope down to that abutting property, to that retaining wall that needs to be replaced at a considerable expense. The plan, I think at this point, would just be to remove that wall and grade that area into the slope. So, again, that would be, that would create a maintenance issue for Janice. So, again, what we're looking to do is divide this and construct and to create a lot and construct a single-family dwelling that would kind of be in conformance with other lots in the neighborhood. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
I don't have a question, I do have a comment. The five-foot lot line setback bothers me. Anytime I see him that small, it bothers me. And you're creating now two five-foot setbacks, non-conforming, that you're asking for relief on. You're asking for a lot of relief on the small lot.
Yeah, and we understand that. And the reason we did that is to try to maintain the 15-foot required setback to the abutting property.
In one side.
On one side.
This'll be an abutting property unless a family member's gonna live here, whoever is in, you know, the existing home now.
Right.
When they're not living there, they're gonna be cheek and jowl against each other.
Right, but that would be...
That's a problem as far as I'm concerned. I just get, one of my pet peeves when I was sitting out there is that we waive a lot. And in some towns, some jurisdictions, they would look at each one of those as a separate variance, and you'd have to prove out each separate variance. I realize that's not how we did things. If they made me vice president of the world for a day, I would make sure that we did it that way, but that's me. And that's my comment on it. It's a lot.
I agree, but it's similar to the case that we have across the street between 433 and 443 Ludlow Street. They have a very similar...
Divided or what the situation there...
What's the frontage on those lots? Because they're not shown.
It's larger.
That one's not the scale. I wanna say they're 50 feet. I mean, all these lots going up and down were right around 50 feet. I did manage to bring my scale tonight, so I'm prepared.
You'd never let that happen again.
No, never again.
We have a question about last month's, then.
Please. Let's not talk about last month.
50 feet. Yep.
With the scales.
Yeah.
But it wasn't a conforming lot to stop it, right?
Correct.
The ones across the street?
No. I believe they were through lots, they might have been given relief.
We don't know how they came to be.
Correct.
But the lot behind, one of the lots behind you for Munger, not America, was denied identical to this.
Correct, but that was a much, that was a pre-existing non-conforming lot to begin with, where this is a existing conforming lot.
Right.
With sufficient area for two lots.
Right, so the argument of you've already got a non-conformity, making two non-conformities is sometimes the board's viewed it as being better than taking a conforming parcel and making a non-conforming. You're creating a non-conforming situation where there is none.
But we're leaving a conforming situation as well.
Right, but you're creating a new one.
Correct.
A parcel that has it.
Yeah, we've only got the five-foot setback now, and so it's not...
And this lot has a non-conforming...
The lot, the structure would be non-conforming. The lot itself would be conforming.
And then the lot itself, I mean, it actually narrows back to 48 feet wide, right? You've got 50 feet of frontage.
Mm-hmm.
But then the lot's actually 48 feet wide. I don't know if there's any 48-foot wide lots out here.
Any other questions from the board?
Just, do we know what the percentage of coverage is on that?
We would not be seeking relief on either lot.
You're not exceeding 25% on the second lot?
I don't believe so, no.
Anything else from the planning? From the audience, anyone to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
There is Gilei Agaposo, a little 438 Ludlow Street, right beside the home.
438 Ludlow, okay.
Yeah, and we have, the land is very high, and we have a wall that, maybe it's not like Chris Miller, but I'm trying my best over here.
It's okay.
And that wall is being pushed by the land and water, so we don't have enough space to buy that land. And I put a lot of value on my home, you know, me and paint my house, put all of that out, and I'm afraid that I'm gonna be losing value on my home too, you know? So, putting a house over there in my vision is gonna create shade, you know? So, it's a lot to think about it before we allow this to be happening. Those are my concerns. Most important thing is the water. I have a picture here of how the water is pushing against, because the land is very high. I didn't know how many people saw it, just three, one is too much.
We can save a tree.
So, we're concerned about those things.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate you coming up, speaking. Always wanna hear people's opinions and concerns. Anyone else to speak in opposition? Anything else? I turn to the board then.
Let me ask one more question. I mean, in the petition or in the advertisement, it says waiving lot coverage, but you just said that you weren't asking to waive lot coverage. Which is it? I just don't wanna end up with the circumstance that now you have to come back.
Yeah, I don't have...
You can do a quick calculation of the square footage of the house and driveway and the stick area real close.
Yeah, it is, I do have it on the application as well. But I would suppose, let me just do something quick.
You've got your scale. Don't do math in your head, I can't either.
You can, but it may be wrong.
I can do it incorrectly.
I can do anything in my head, but...
25, 7, 19...
Just leave the walkways out for now, because they could be pavers if we had to.
Right, and, yeah, same thing. I mean, the house, the house wouldn't put it over. The house would be at 19%, and I think everything else we could make work one way or the other, where we wouldn't need the lot coverage requirement. Even with the driveway, I think we could pave that and still be on there, with the 18 by 18, well, 20 by 20, I should say.
Yeah. You've got 400 square foot driveway, you've got 12 by 16 deck, and then you've got walkways.
Yeah, the walkways could be paved. The deck doesn't, deck doesn't count, does it?
No.
No.
You're close. All right. It is a variance, folks. Is any questions now is the time to ask them? If there aren't, now's the time to make a decision.
I make a motion to deny. I think it's too close to the other houses. The envelope is too tight.
A second.
We have a motion to deny and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? An affirmative vote is to deny. On that, Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Cawkins.
Yes.
John Frank.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number eight, Hyde Development LLC.
Yeah.
Care of Jeffrey Tolman. This is Zero, north-south Bedford Street, map L09, lot 35. The applicant seeks a variance to construct a two-family duplex-style dwelling, waiving lot coverage area, front and rear setbacks, and a G general zoning district.
Good evening. For the record, Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants. I am looking for, paper I was handed by Attorney Klarin before he left. I believe Nina received a copy of it today.
It's in everyone's iPad.
Okay. So, basically, the petitioner submitted a request to withdraw the application without prejudice.
Can you go?
So, that's...
I can print it if you can't find it.
Oh, I had it.
We'll be okay. For the sake of time.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in favor of withdrawing without prejudice.
Very good. Do we have a second on that?
I have a second.
Motion and second. On the motion, Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Cawkins.
Yes.
John Frank.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. Thank you very much. Don't move. Albie, I'm never gonna pronounce his last name correctly.
Gagera.
Gagera?
Yeah.
God bless you. Albie Gagera, care of Jeffrey P. Tolman, 193, 19... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Was there anybody here in regard to that last petition on Hyde Street?
No, Bedford.
No. And Bedford and Boj...
Bedford, I'm sorry, Bedford.
You were here for that?
We were here for...
Okay, the applicant decided to withdraw.
They've withdrawn.
Yep, thank you.
They wanna stay, they'll be dancing later, cocktails, so...
If they did, if I could come back again, you'll be notified again.
Save it, in case it comes back.
Yes, thank you for coming. It's always important.
Thank you.
You too. All right. Item number nine, let me start all over again.
I'm here for 384th Street, that was number four.
Yep. We'll put you to the end.
We'll just move in.
Thank you.
Item number nine. Albie Gagera, care of Jeffrey P. Tolman, 193, 195, and 199 Snell Street, map F20, lot two. The applicant requests a special permit per B, I'm sorry, per 86 423B to subdivide the subject property into two lots, leaving the existing six-family dwelling on one lot and an existing single-family dwelling and two-family dwelling on a separate lot submitted per submitted, per submitted plans on an A2 apartment zoning district.
Good evening. For the record, Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants here on behalf of Albie Gagera, the petitioner for the special permit. That's before you. This property is located on the south side of Snell Street, just west of Dover Street. It's located in the apartment A2 zoning district. I'm sure you're all aware of it. It has been before you within the past couple of years, I believe. There are three dwelling structures located, what three structures located on the property? There's number 193, which is a six-family dwelling at the front of the property that was built back in 1930. There's 195 Snell Street, which is a single-family house located in the middle of the property, which was also built around that same time, 1930. And then there was the existing commercial space towards the back that we had come in for and got relief to convert that into two residential apartment units. So, that would not, you know, was not a dwelling prior to 1954, so I don't know if it's subject to 423B. But what we're looking to do simply is to divide this property for, for the purpose, basically, of being able to finance the rear, single-family and two-family, those two structures with a residential loan, as opposed to being, having the whole property on a commercial loan. So, that's the applicant's intent. That's why he wanted to come back here. We fully understand that one of the conditions of the approval when we came in for the conversion on that back building was that there would be no further subdivision, which I understand, but I believe it's also this board has the ability to, given any particular circumstances, to overturn that and come up with a new condition if they feel it's warranted. We're not looking, again, to separate all these structures. I actually think the division, the way we have it, makes sense, because the parking for the six-family would be on that lot. There would be an easement, which I don't have shown on this particular plan, but obviously there'd be an access easement to get back to those parking spots. And then the parking that we have at the rear of the property would be for the existing single-family and the two new residential units, which are currently under construction. And that parking, that hasn't changed from what we had when we came in for the first variance and also the, what was approved through site plan review. Again, this is simply just to separate that six-family out, leave that, just have that on a commercial loan and then get a residential loan for the rear lot. Be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
I do not have any questions. Anyone else on the board have any questions?
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong plant, but I don't... Where is the division line?
The division line, it runs, it starts from Snell, runs right up the edge of the driveway. And then it turns to the west, right in front of the existing single-family dwelling.
Is that another page, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
The previous plans on the last one.
Oh, maybe you're looking at the previous plan.
You're looking at all of it. If you went to the one all the way to the right, you're gonna go to the south. You're gonna go to the second one.
Jim has a... That shows the conversion of the last one.
Oh, that's the old one, that's why.
It's your old one.
That's the one we did in the first one.
Yep.
Nina confused you. You confused us by throwing them all over.
You gave too much information. She gives you too much information.
Second, yeah.
You give her too much information.
Very thorough, Nina.
Yeah.
Anything from the board? You oriented, James?
Yeah, I understand.
Turning to the audience. Is there anyone here to speak on the...in behalf of this application? Anyone to speak in opposition? Okay. They're hearing none. I come back to the board. We did... There was a condition of no additional subdivision or further subdivision of the lot that was made. We do have the right to overrule the decision that was made previously. Planning? I don't know how you feel about it.
At the time, we allowed the convoluted parking and access to occur because it was going to remain a private, single property, and allowed that conversion to take place. It would be my recommendation that you don't go back on the condition that you already placed on the property.
You're in my head, Dan.
I mean, it was a stretch to allow it to even...and the applicant took that approval, accepted it, and moved forward with the conversion.
What do you wish us, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to deny, standing on the previous decision that we voted to not further subdivide the property.
We have a second on that?
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. They're hearing none. On the motion, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Eric Kelly, yes. And Chairman Prairie, yes.
Thank you.
Item number eleven. Does any...does anyone wish to take a break at this point? Let's roll. Let's roll. Item number eleven, Atlantic West LLC, care of Peter A. Salino, Attorney Peter A. Salino, I apologize.
Number ten.
Oh, yeah. I skipped. What the heck am I doing? I know why, too. Item number ten, Petro Real Estate LLC, care of Attorney Peter A. Salino, seven sixty-one Highland Avenue. Map M-19, Lot 30. The applicant constructed the property in conjunction with prior relief granted. However, further relief is needed through a variance for lot coverage as well as a special permit for parking in an S single-family zoning district.
Thank you. For the record, Peter Salino, on behalf of the applicant, Petro Real Estate LLC. As Mr. Chairman just read, this matter was before the board in October of two thousand twenty-two. The board probably remembers that at that time, the requested relief was to convert the former nursing home facility into nine residential apartments. That relief was granted with certain conditions, one of which was that the proposed lot coverage be no greater than sixty-nine percent. Ultimately, through a couple of errors in the size of the patio and construction, it's five percent over that. So, the first issue is that the lot coverage, as it sits on the ground at the completion of the construction, is seventy-four percent, as opposed to the sixty-nine percent that was approved by the board in October of two thousand twenty-two. So, there's a five percent differential. Additionally, the as-construted version of this project resulted in two less parking spaces than we had requested previously. And as a result, what's on the ground is sixteen parking spaces instead of eighteen parking spaces. For the board's edification, the building is completed. It is approximately fifty percent occupied. The blend of units is such that there are six one-bedroom units and three two-bedroom units, and I think that's relevant to the parking argument and specifically the lack of detriment. I submit to you that based on the unit count, even with the sixteen spaces that are there, I'd submit to you that that's appropriate based on the number of units and the types of units that they are, being that the majority are smaller one-bedroom units. So, certainly after the fact, ready to take my licks, Mr. Chairman, but I would submit to you that these are small deviations on a very nice project. And so, we're asking the board for variance on lot coverage and a special permit on the parking waiver.
I will just say this, and, you know, you've already alluded to the fact that I hate permission after the fact. This was not the easiest one to get permitted. And I will say that in some cases, the board took some hits over this one, to the plus and to the minus. It's stunning. It is absolutely beautiful. Find two parking spaces is my opinion on it at this point in time.
Okay.
Create two minicar spaces. Do something. But this was...you fought the battle. This...and, you know, we...you changed the number of units. There was an adjustment made. That's my opinion on that. You know, kind of the same thing with, you know, the patio's bigger, so we need to make a change by, you know, five...well, four percent, five percent. Why? Is my question. Why? Why professional builders, excellent developer? Why? That's me. Okay? I'm one guy. And I turn to the rest of the board and actually...let me turn to planning right now.
Well, I don't disagree with your assertion, but what I would say is, right now, along the subtly boundary, at least what's dimensioned on the plan, you have seven twenty-one-foot-long spaces. That's a hundred and forty-seven feet. Divide that by eighteen feet, which is the actual required, may not be what you want for parallel parking, but you can pick up one space right there with just re-stripping and making eighteen-foot spaces.
Okay.
Is it great to have eighteen's parallel like that and stacked? No, twenty-one would be better, but theoretically, for zoning purposes, you could pick up one on that side. I'm looking at the spaces at the building where it says existing ten-by-eighteen parking spaces, three. I'm not sure...what's the hatched area that's in front of those spaces? Because they don't look eighteen feet deep. Maybe it's just my eyes. What's the area that's hatched in front of those spaces?
Calling in my all-star witness, Jeffrey Tolman.
Is that like a walkway?
Yeah, like a walkway that's been hatched out.
Did that...so, the concrete retaining wall, that was added, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think what you're on to it on the south side, make those spots smaller. And I believe this, because that gate is going to be permanently closed in emergency purposes only, I think we have the ability to add one more at the very end of that.
So, if you look at this, and if you throw in minimum aisle widths of what you need to have, I would think the board would rather see a waiver of aisle width than parking space size. So, even on the side of the ADA space, what's the dimension from the parallel space along the subtly property line and that hatch area? Is it greater than twenty-two feet?
See, I have my scale plan, but I don't have the plan.
You want to look at it? No, I think you could easily stripe out the two extra spaces. I don't have...
No, I...I would submit that we could probably find the two additional spaces. I agree. If there was some relief given on the aisle width. Or even, if not, I mean, we can go with the nine-by-eighteen.
Yeah, but I think you can do it. So, maybe you just want to...maybe you want a table and you can re-stripe it.
Well, we have the seven at the bottom. I think we can, if we tighten those up, I think we can add one more to it as well.
Yep.
And get nine there.
Because I don't recall that the driveway along handle, and again, it's supposed to be closed. I don't think that has to be twenty-two feet.
No.
What's the purpose of it? I don't remember what it was. I remember there was a discussion at the meeting about why that driveway wanted to be there.
I think it was already there, wasn't it? There was a curb cut.
It was there.
It was already there.
But if you can technically get in and out on Highland Avenue with some aisle width discussion, you could probably...you might even be able to get one. You might even want to just stack...I know you get the dumpster pad there, but you could have put one there and then bumped the dumpster pad over, but maybe...I'm sure you can stripe one additional space on top of the additional one that you had along subtly boundary line.
But I'm almost thinking, because if we take three feet off of those seven, that's one additional, and then we can add one to the end.
That's what I'm saying. You just add one somewhere.
So, we can get nine there.
Possibly.
Yeah.
I don't do that anymore.
I think that's...I think that's the simplest solution, rather than try to play around with the other stuff on the north side. I think if...
Wherever they are. The board can grant the lot coverage and ten, just require re-striping of spaces at nine-by-eighteen.
Find...just find the spots. That's what you...
What about the lot coverage, guys? I knew the parking spaces were magically there somehow. How do we feel about the lot coverage?
I think we need to...finding the parking is going to set precedence over that five percent of the lot coverage, as far as I'm concerned.
I would argue that the increased quality of landscaping offsets the increase in lot coverage.
Yeah. I mean, it's a great project. They did a phenomenal job. It's just making it work.
I agree. I agree.
Let's see what the neighborhood has to say.
Let's see what the neighborhood has to say.
Is that true of the original?
Is there anyone here present tonight that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to the petition?
My name is Sohai. I'm the president of... Director of Forum, my society, my least society in. My address, seven forty-five Highland Avenue, Forum. Today, we come here, but we do not talk about lot coverage or parking. We do not talk about this thing. Yes.
I see.
On behalf of moderator and our community, we would like to suggest you adjusting this man a bit lower because when we go out, we do not see it as being a cyclist on the side.
Do you have an additional copy of that for us?
We have two here, so...
We have multiples here.
Okay, thank you.
I can see the argument.
I can see it. They can't see coming out of that driveway.
Okay, go ahead. So, the lattice area. Drop that fence. So, your objection is this top area here?
Yeah.
Okay. So, if we can reduce that height, that would be helpful to you?
Yeah, yeah, because when we go out, we cannot see someone walk.
Yeah, I understand the argument. It seems like a safety issue to me. Okay, so for purposes of zoning tonight, I will make a motion to table so that we...I need the form. I'll give you the form.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I brought excuses just in case.
We like forms. We do know.
Well, I mean...
It's all filled up.
I don't know if you have the table.
I don't think we have the table.
Oh, okay.
It's just going to be...they're not going to grant the waiver of reduction in parking, and they can grant the waiver of lot coverage.
Okay.
You can't find it.
Easier for you, finding spots.
Come on, take a chance, people.
No.
That's fine. Okay. Sorry. I thought you wanted a new plan.
But rather than get a denial on the reduction in parking, just withdraw that part of the petition.
Okay. All right. So, then, rather than pay you money, I was going to ask David Assad to deliver my five-hundred-dollar check tomorrow, but nevertheless, wouldn't that have been fun? We'll make a motion to withdraw the portion of the petition relating to the parking.
Okay. I think that's...that's fine.
Yep.
Can we give us the first...the request?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the request to withdraw the parking variance or parking change.
Reduction of parking.
Parking reduction. Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. On the motion, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Eric Kelly?
Yes.
And Jim Prairie, yes. Okay. So, that leaves us with the lot coverage.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance on our coverage as requested.
Second.
Very good. Motion and second. Discussion on the motion. In that case, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes.
Thank you.
Can we just talk about this situation for a second?
Yeah.
Can you take that back to your client? I think that's reasonable because that is definitely a safety issue. Somebody walking down the sidewalk. So...
Yeah, that should be no issue.
Can he be in touch with the people of the temple, please, or someone on his behalf?
Absolutely.
Be in touch?
Could you give me a telephone number, gents, on the back of this? Just right on the back form?
Nina, are these your copies? Are these Peter's?
Uh, you can get those.
That one, that one's...
I mean, I'm just going to recycle it after I made a moment.
I am going to call that five minutes.
I'll help you out.
Okay. You're in your bladder. You're in your bladder.
It's a canopy or...
Yeah, but if they're driving on their course, they can't see through it. Yeah, got it. Okay.
All right. Good to go. Let's go. Item number eleven, Atlantic West LLC, care of Attorney Peter A. Salino, zero South Street. Map...
South Beacon Street.
South Beacon Street. Sorry. Yes, you are correct. I figured if I skipped a word, I could go faster. Map H-oh-six, Lot twenty-five. The applicant seeks a special permit to construct seventeen residential condominiums as well as variance relief for side yard setbacks and a CMD commercial mill district per submitted plans.
Thank you. Peter Salino, on behalf of the applicant, Atlantic West LLC. My client purchased this lot as a Form A lot. The proposal, as is read into the record, is to construct seventeen residential units on the property. The two waivers that are being sought are a special permit to make a residential use of the property in a CMD district, as well as a side setback variance. As proposed, we're seeking five feet in all other respects, as opposed to ten. In all other respects, the project conforms to zoning in terms of area frontage setback. So, it's...this petition is about use and side setback only.
I'm just drinking again. Dan, what does planning say?
Again, as Attorney Salino stated, the use is consistent with what special permits are allowed for in the commercial mill district. The development of the surrounding area has been permitted in a similar manner. Directly across the street is the four-hundred-unit conversion of the existing Dural mills, which surrounds this. Directly to the north of this, it was permitted for self-storage buildings, units, which has not been constructed. So, as far as the setback requirements, just note, let...on the backs of units one and two, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, the way that the buildings are shown would preclude the ability to construct decks, because decks would need to meet the ten-foot requirement. They could have patios, but they couldn't have decks. It does look like there's room, if they choose to, that they could slide units one and two forward yet to give them the room, and fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. So, I don't think they'll be locked in with this building footprint.
You're saying shorten the driveways, then?
But that's...they're not asking for relief for that. I'm just saying, as shown, they're meeting the ten-foot setback. The only relief for the five-foot would be on the side of unit seventeen, the side of unit three. I don't know off the top of my head what the development looked like adjacent to unit three. We'll see how close anything was being constructed to that, but I don't think there was any units being proposed there in that narrow strip. It's only fifty feet wide. And then as far on the other side, they're going to be adjacent to a storage unit, so I don't see an issue with any of it. I actually think they probably could have fit many more units on this than what's being proposed there, because they don't need to create a cul-de-sac. They really don't need the driveways and the ability.
Well, I have to be a cul-de-sac.
But I don't have an issue with it.
And for the record, my client doesn't...he's okay without decks.
It's okay.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I see what you're saying, Dan. That it didn't need to be a cul-de-sac, really.
Yeah. I mean, it's just a waste of pavement, but they could still change that. You know, they got a number of units on those two setbacks, and they can have one structure at five feet, one the other structure at five feet. All the other dimensions, they meet the setback requirement.
Cool. It's all within our purview, guys. What other questions does the board have?
I have two questions.
Yep.
Unit size, because I always ask that one.
They're dimensioned on the plan of nineteen by thirty-three. Number of bedrooms?
How many bedrooms?
Doesn't really matter. They're providing two parking spaces, which is required by zoning.
Well, that was my other question. Number eight doesn't show it, but it's probably just a typo, because I would assume the ones that are inside, the blocks inside, the buildings out.
Yeah, you're right.
Interior parking.
Would you like to see that?
Inside a garage.
Building eight doesn't show a garage space. I'm assuming there's going to be one?
There's going to be one, yes.
So, two spaces per...
That's it.
That's it. Anybody else on the board? Turning to the audience, anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this petition?
Yes, I am Ken Faiola, the executive vice president of the county EDC. I'd like to weigh in in favor of this particular petition as it complots to other types of development that are occurring around the area, most notably before this board, just over a year ago with the rehab of the old Duro mill for residential purposes. So this adds to the overall transformational impact and effect of this Beacon Street area itself. We all knew, we all know that there's additional need for more housing within the city. This is going to be, help, help meet that, that need. And obviously, the more supply we can continue to create, it's also going to help with the alleviation of rentals, higher rentals, because now you have more supply available and less than some of the, less than some of the demand that's out there. So we think it's in keeping with the abutting of previously approved uses, and it'll also create some tax value for the city in terms of residential use. I would like to point out, the record's also within the housing development zone. It's an overlay zone to this area, so it's not that housing is not something that was contemplated for this area. So off the act of concern and the other, you know, that I just noted, I hope that the board will see it's, it's way clear to approve this petition.
All right, anything else? Anyone else in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? They're hearing none. I turn to the board. We have a special permit, relief for the, my brain just shut down.
Use.
Use. And I'm reading ahead, I'm sorry. Variance relief aside, side yard setback.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the use variance as well as the side yard setbacks as proposed in the plan.
Special permit is for the, the variance is only for the side yard setbacks.
Make it as two separate votes, please.
Yeah.
Special permit for the commercial, residential in, in the commercial mill district. 17 units.
So we need, is that a bifurcated vote?
You could, if you would like to.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the special permit on the use, finding that it is, will not be more substantially detrimental in the area, and move for the grant.
Very good. Do we have a second on the not more detrimental in acceptance of the or?
Second.
Approval of use. Second. Very good. On the motion, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Joe Prairie, yes.
Thank you.
I move that we grant the variance on the side yard setbacks as presented in the plan.
Second.
Motion and second. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. Good looking plan. Thank you. Item number 12, Tucker Doxson, I love the name, LLC, care of attorney Peter A. Salino, 29, I'm sorry, 20 Laurel Street, map C-01 lots one and 40. The applicant seeks to demolish an existing single-family dwelling and to construct a new building for auto sales and auto repair. The applicant seeks a variance slash special permit to waive side yard and rear yard setbacks and a BL local business zoning district per submitted plans.
Good evening. For the record, Peter Salino, on behalf of the applicant, notwithstanding the LLC name, this is Brian Viera. Brian owns and operates Ami's Auto, or Ami's Auto, if I was really French, right, on Earl Street in Fall River. Brian's a great mechanic, but he's outgrown his location. So he owns this parcel. He's looking to move his operation to this parcel. The proposal includes the demolition of the existing structure as shown on the plan, which is a multifamily building. My client intends to construct a building on the site from which he will repair cars. We will later seek to also sell cars and seek the appropriate approvals for that. In terms of the relief sought pursuant to this petition, we're looking for use because it's in a business local district. We're looking for side setback, and we're looking for rear yard setback. So there's three waivers that are required to make the project work as depicted on the plan. Parking is appropriate as proposed. There will be a small office use incidental to his operation as an auto body shop. Happy to take any questions about the site or the design or future plans for the location. And lastly, and for the record, this may be the best shape argument I've ever had in the city of Fall River. So let me say, for the record, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law 40A, due and owing to the shape of this parcel, we need some waivers on setback.
Bravo.
Excellent, right?
Okay, so the existing.
That's staying, there's one here that's coming down the larger.
Right, the existing, it says existing six unit.
Correct, that is staying. That is on the south side of the property, sort of near Gemon Farms.
Yep.
Yep.
And we have parking accommodating that all the way along the back and the front side.
That is correct.
So all that parking across the back is for that six family? Everything on that south side?
Not all of it.
Okay, all right. Is, is there, I mean, there's adequate parking there currently for that six family, a six family dwelling?
Yes.
And you're not going to reduce their parking?
Not at all.
No.
All right. Other questions from the board? From planning?
I would just point out that this is actually a merger of three separate lots to be able to make this work. The setback relief, you know, in the BL district, you're only required to have a 12-foot front yard setback, which theoretically they would meet on one side, but what are we calling, front, side, rear? So I think it was good that they just said, as shown on the plan, 12 feet to each of this, of the streets. I will point out that auto sales is allowed in the BL district, so there's no relief for that. Auto repair, which I believe is what the request is, not auto body.
Yeah, that's a mistake in my part.
So there would be relief being granted for auto repair. They've laid out well areas for service and display at the front of the property at the point, and have provided ample parking for the multifamily as well as customer parking to the rear and employees as well. So pretty well laid out.
Yeah.
Minimal curb cut changes, utilizes, I think, existing curb cuts in most cases. All aisle widths are appropriate. I think it's.
Signage?
Good plan. Signage will have to comply with the BL zoning district.
Right, there's no.
Anything beyond that.
Ask for.
We're not in this petition asking for any relief related to signs.
Yeah. There is a sign shown, but it has to comply with the district.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Going to the general public? Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? They're hearing none. It's on us. Good looking plan. Congratulations on now growing your space.
Thank you.
So we have a variance?
Is it a variance and a special permit or just?
It is a.
I think it ends up as a variance. I checked both because I wasn't sure at the time I filed.
I would just move them, move the entire petition as a variance as presented.
I'll make a motion to grant the variance.
Second. Variance and second?
Just want to say, make sure, as stated in the proposal, that that single family will be demolished.
Yep, and just in accordance with plans.
Yes.
All right, very good. Motion and second. No need to change anything on that. Therefore, on the motion, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Eric Kelly?
Yes.
And Chairman Prairie, yes?
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Sometime you'll have to tell me how you get the name of the company.
They only have Labrador or Trivus.
Love it.
Thank you.
Item number 13, Grand Manor Holdings LLC, care of attorney Peter A. Salino, 289 Bank Street, map N4, Lot 29. The applicant seeks a variance to convert the existing four-unit apartment building into an eight-unit apartment building waiving dimensional requirements. Additionally, the petitioner is requesting a special permit to waive parking requirements. The property is loaded, located in an A2 apartment zoning district.
Thank you. Can you change the plan, please? Thank you. Okay, good evening. For the record, on this petition, Peter Salino, on behalf of the applicant, Grand Manor Holdings. With me is Richard Gibson, here as a representative of Grand Manor Holdings. Grand Manor Holdings is a putative buyer of the subject property, so they're acting pursuant to a purchase and sale agreement. Their purchase and sale agreement is contingent upon receiving the zoning relief they need in order to permit this project. So for the board's edification, property obviously sits at the corner of High and Bank, and the inside, it's a complete mess. It needs a complete rehab. In addition to debris, there's no apartments in there right now. It was previously a four-family, but it's no longer used as a four-family. And so part of the issue with a petition like this is always crafting a use that makes the economics work in order to make it a viable use of the project. So for the boards, or for me to draw your attention, the deed to the property on Exhibit A has several parcels, and one of which is this small strip of land that's located at the northwesterly corner of Bank and High. Per the deed, it's only about 1,700, 1,0718 square feet, more or less. So the proposal here is to convert the existing shell of a building into eight units, which would require a variance as a result of lack of square footage in the A2 district. And then we're seeking a waiver of parking pursuant to the special permit by law because obviously we would be deficient. Currently, the lots shown as 275 and 289 on this plan are owned by the same family. And so there are some cars that are parked to the southwesterly corner of the subject at 289. But we did not show that. There are generally two, my clients indicated to me today, there are generally two cars back there that have access over the 275 lot. But taking that aside for a second, I'd submit to the board that based on my own independent research and driving around there, High Street from Bedford to Bank has parking on the east side by meter. For the last two nights, I've driven by there just at this, you know, at the six o'clock time of night, and there's not, there are no cars on that side of High Street. Additionally, on Bank Street from Rock Street to High Street, tonight, for example, there were two cars in that entire stretch on the street parking. And then finally, from Pine to Bank along Rock, no cars in the parking. So I'd submit to you that I know we're deficient in parking, but I also believe that the surrounding area lends itself to on-street parking and would make this proposal not more detrimental to the neighborhood, notwithstanding the requested increase in units. We're happy to answer any questions, but again, this is a putative buyer trying to make a dilapidated structure work for him.
And the, roughly, what's the square footage of that structure? Do you know? Just, just roughly. I'm just wondering how you get to the, the eight units.
It's about 49 hertz square feet.
Okay.
So the eight units would be, would vary between over 500 to 800 square feet. As you can see, it's a very irregular shape. Each, each story is different.
No, I was just trying to get a rough idea.
And I should, again, ahead of Mr. DePere's question, the proposal is one-bedroom units.
I figured.
What is, what's the square footage requirement for a unit in the A2 zoning district? I think it's 600 square feet.
Let me check my bylaw.
I will look as well. I just, for some reason, I thought the A2 had a specific minimum size unit.
Oh, 5,500 square feet total.
Is the building?
Is the building, not counting the basement.
So Dan, your question is the apartment size. What's the minimum apartment size?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know.
For some reason, I thought in the A2, there was a minimum, I think.
God, God forbid we put it in the dimensional chart.
I know. You've got to go look for it somewhere.
Do you know Star Witness?
Okay, so 86148 apartment districts, A2. Every dwelling unit for this district shall contain at least three rooms, exclusive of halls and a bathroom. Such three-room dwelling unit shall contain at least 600 square feet of gross floor space.
Okay.
And an additional 120 feet of floor space for each additional room.
So if you go over the three rooms, you need 120, I should.
Yeah. So you're just going to make sure, you haven't asked for that relief, so you're going to have to comply to that. But that being said, this, this property is located in the arts overlay district, which I think the building inspector did not take into account.
It isn't.
Which allows for multifamily use of unlimited density. So I don't necessarily think a variance is required for the use, but parking still needs to be dealt with.
Parking needs to be dealt with.
And in the AOD, they do have.
And the unit size is going to have to be.
They do have different ways of dealing with parking. On the lot across the street, Attorney Salino?
Yes.
It's labeled as existing private parking area containing five spaces dedicated to 289 Bank Street.
Yep.
Is the intention to retain those spaces?
Yes, and the intention is to purchase those. So I've confirmed with the client today, that's in his purchase and sale agreement, that he'd be buying 289, the building at 289, and that 1,700 square foot sliver of land on the west side of High Street.
Okay, well, that would require a subdivision. So it may not be a guarantee, and that's going to require a variance to create that. So I would recommend, and you had, you had made an assertion of getting to some parking in the back, it would be my recommendation to clean up this petition.
Good.
And probably table it so that those items can be addressed. I don't want you to accept the condition of acquiring that strip of land to create those parking spaces. One, if they're in the layout, they don't constitute parking spaces. If they're not nine by 18, they don't constitute parking spaces. So I don't want to pigeonhole you into what you think you may need and then find out it's not what you need.
Right.
So maybe we want to spend some time to make sure that you can show on a plan what you're providing for parking so that the board can vote with some level of education where is the parking come from. I will also tell you that in this arts overlay district, parking has been reduced down to a rate of one space per unit, usually when they're one-bedroom units, which I think might be the case here. That might help figure out how you want to present the parking relief. Just my recommendation.
And as you work through the building itself, consider that 600 square foot minimum?
Or, or ask for relief to be smaller than 600 square feet, I guess. But I don't know if because the, it's in the arts overlay district, if that A2 would apply.
Okay.
That minimum square footage. Ask the building inspector that. You may be able to preclude that 600 square feet.
Yeah.
Once the building inspector knows, it's also in the arts overlay district.
Okay.
And I know we have an applicant that's not down the street.
Right.
But we want to make sure that you get the relief.
No, and that's appreciated, certainly.
And then beyond that, who is Buy, Renovate, Sell LLC?
It's me.
Okay, because that's who the petitioner is on the plan. So we might want to get that cleared away.
They're related entities, but we can fix that.
Understand that.
Jeff, do you have any commentary surrounding if this isn't a layout? Do you know?
It would require some survey.
Yeah, we've looked at that in, I mean, the, the spots I'm showing there are not, but we may need some help with the, the size. You may need a reduction in parking spaces in those board.
Okay.
I think today it's actually spaced for seven, but we expanded it to make it more conforming, right?
Yeah, the, the issue there is that retaining wall dividing the grade level spots on High Street with the ones above it in the parking lot. It's in a bad spot.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't need to be in. Because the aisle width in the parking lot is huge for no reason.
Right. But you can't gain anything because you've got the retaining wall and you can't.
The retaining wall would have to be relocated and, yeah.
Not cheap. Not cheap. Okay.
All right. So before I make a motion, just so I'm clear, so we need to investigate the parking on the west side of High Street. We need to size out the units and speak to the building inspector about, what was it?
If the minimum six hundred square foot would apply, because you're also now in the arts overlay district.
Okay.
So that may override the requirements of the A2 underlying zoning district.
And then also look, there's an easement for parking behind the building.
If you're gonna park, if you're gonna park behind that building.
Yeah.
Make sure you can come back with a secured easement over 275, if you're gonna use those spaces.
Okay.
Also, are you going to continue it as a variance or change it to a special permit?
Fair question.
I actually think everything can be done as a special permit.
So we'd have to re-advertise?
You re-advertise, but you wouldn't have to pay special permit fee because you already did.
Okay.
So just the table and fee.
Okay.
And the advertisement fee.
Okay.
And I think we can get that cleaned up and hopefully get you on your way.
Okay. And I won't even make a motion to waive the fee.
You can tell, you can tell the chairman, the ex-chairman hasn't been here in a while.
Whew! New sheriff in town. Nina, I indulge you for another table form because my client needed a notepad to write on this.
Oh, sorry. I thought that was left in the last person.
Yeah.
About five.
A one-month, a one-month change here doesn't adversely affect you in the decision?
Uh, no, I don't think so, right? A month. So it would actually be negatively impacted.
He didn't want to buy that.
The person's arguing it?
Yeah.
Oh, he should buy it.
Go ahead. Okay, yeah, so we're okay with a month?
Yeah.
You wanna make a motion, or request?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna fill out the form so I don't get in trouble. Is that okay?
So we can take a motion.
Okay. So we'll make a motion to table the requested petition to the September, is it eighteenth?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth meeting.
When does the ad need to be placed? We have time to resolve this internally, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we have time.
Yeah.
I think it's next.
Yeah, that's right, because this is actually an early meeting deadline.
Oh, no. Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, based upon their request, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the request to table till our September eighteenth.
Nineteenth.
Our nineteenth meeting.
Second.
Motion in second, two seconds. A third. On the motion, John Frank.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes.
Thank you.
We have two weeks before we have to advertise.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Are you representing number fourteen? Because you're not on the list.
I am not. Thank you.
Then you must vacate.
You're a good applicant.
I'm sorry. Who made the motion?
Motion, Ms. James, table, uh, in second was, the first second came from John.
Okay. And then everyone said yes.
You can either punch.
Beat it to the punch.
Is that little yellow red book?
Item number fourteen.
Oh.
Nathan Borges.
Red book.
Sixty-four Woodman Street, map A18, lot 18. Applicant seeks an after-the-fact variance to construct a twenty-four by twenty-four-foot addition waving side yard setbacks in an R8 multifamily zoning district.
Oh, okay.
Sir.
Hi. My name's Nathan Borges. So I had gotten involved when the homeowner had given me a call. Apparently, he had gotten a variance for this setback back in 2011. I wasn't aware of that at the time. I actually thought it was a lot sooner, but essentially, the original variance that he had was twenty-four by fourteen, and the building that he wants was twenty-four by twenty-two. We don't encroach on the rear setbacks, and essentially, we were just looking for the same relief that was given in the original variance for the side setbacks.
So is it, are we talking about a matter of setback, or are we talking?
Uh, yes, sir. The, if, I believe when she pulls the image up, you'll see it, the house is a corner lot, and it sits fairly close on the street side.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yep. So you can see where the addition is, it stays in line with the envelope on the left and right. The original variance had only gone back twenty-four, or excuse me, fourteen.
Oh, it's the depth of it.
Correct.
Yeah. It's the depth along Palm Street.
Yes, sir.
So it's a pre-existing, non-conforming structure. They're not, they're not making it more non-conforming with regards to setback.
Correct.
Okay.
Are the minutes, the approval on the minutes is twenty-four by eighteen?
Uh, I did notice that, but the drawing they had given me had only had fourteen.
Okay.
So essentially, what we were looking for, even with the eighteen, we'd still need a couple additional feet. So I believe it's twenty-four by twenty-two is the actual structure.
No building permit was pulled to build this.
Now, how about, how about lot coverage? Have we requested relief for lot coverage?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Because in your variance, allow for the addition coming home, so I think that's the only relief requested. On the plan, there is a lot coverage table that says will be at fifty-one point nine percent, or twenty-five percent is required. And then backing up, the addition's built, correct?
Uh, correct. It's currently, like, erected, like, it's framed.
Okay. So clearly, we've had any increase in lot coverage.
Uh, yes, sir.
Which was not. Which was not advertised, so.
It's on the plan as informational, but there's no narrative on the plan of the relief being requested. I don't know, let's see what the building inspector wrote in his denial. Applicant seeks permission for a twenty-four by twenty-four addition that has been erected without proper permits and site plan approval. So there wasn't even a building permit?
Uh, I guess the bill, the homeowner had originally pulled one, I guess, at the time.
For the smaller building?
Yeah, but not. And then when we had gotten involved, I was under the impression that it was current, but it was brought to my attention by Eugene that it wasn't.
So there was no lot.
How long ago was that building's improvement called?
Eugene had told me that there was.
It was, yeah, it was back in, I, I, he had, this, the, I guess the original one, one was, variance was done back in 2011. So it was.
Right. The question is, which, the variance has, has a lifespan, too.
Correct.
That if you don't act on it.
Yeah, we had definitely surpassed that.
Okay. And then if there was a building permit issued, it only has a lifespan of six months to act upon it.
Correct. And that, at that point, has already been elapsed, so.
So if that's the, if that's the case, then the construction and framing that's being done right now is under no building permit.
Yeah, and all, anything that had been done had been stopped. I met Eugene on-site and kinda walked him through what had been, like, what had happened, and then he directed us to do the site plan, because from when the first variance was done, there was no site plan required, like, a site plan review. And then we did and submitted the site plan review, and then at that time, we had known that we needed, like, relief for the variance because the other variance was no longer in effect.
Yeah, because I think, looking at your plan, I think the driveway on Woodman Street was added, so lot coverage is, it definitely has to be dealt with.
Yeah.
I, I know that you, this is you personally that applied for this. Are you a licensed contractor?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Under your name personally, or is it your business name?
Uh, I have both. My name and business.
Yeah. I mean, you, you, my opinion, you can't continue with this construction. And as the planning director points out, we've, we've got additional lot coverage here. I realize it's not yours.
Yep.
But.
So we'd have to, like, kinda refile and request the lot coverage? Like, I know we'd have to, I guess.
Yeah, because the, the original, the original variance died on the line, so it expired.
Went this way. Was perimeter, typical fourteen, which I think put us at that, and then it went to twenty-four.
Fourteen, he went to twenty-three. So that way was the big, the width of the house.
Yeah. And then that was added.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It went deeper ten feet than he showed.
Correct. We're still away from the rear setback.
I guess, yeah.
Yeah. Setback issue, it's actually pulling away from the lot line, which is fine.
Yeah.
But it's also added lot coverage because the building was made bigger.
Yeah.
So I guess that's.
But that wasn't implied fault.
Yeah, that, that, I think that was the oversight.
So with that lack of thirty, or the lot coverage, we can't act on this anyway, or we, even if we granted the variance.
You can only grant the variance for the structure, not the lot coverage. You're still a non-compliant.
It's not advertised for, for the lot coverage.
It would be quicker to.
Withdraw and come back.
Uh, or table and re-advertise.
Yeah.
That's up to you guys.
Same, same.
It was a substantial filing fee because he did pay for the after-the-fact filing, right?
Which is an additional five hundred.
Which he did pay for.
Okay. Ms. Chairman, I move that we table this till our next.
Well, he has to request it.
He has to request.
Sorry, could I request to table until the next meeting?
Does September give you enough time?
Uh, yes, I can, as he stated, the percentages is on there, so we can, I guess, advertise to request that percentage.
Just send us a corrected narrative of the relief.
Right.
Absolutely.
Recheck the percentages.
Yeah.
So the, the plan that was presented for this, which won't open on my darn computer, here we go.
It's on the screen.
That is where, where we are.
Correct. Yeah, that's.
That size driveway.
Nothing's changed.
That size twenty-four by twenty-four structure, the pool's there, the, the house hasn't changed.
Correct.
Garage in the back hasn't changed.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So you got the plan. That's good.
Yeah. It's just, I guess I'll, I have to alter for the percentage that's covered.
But we just need to, because the percentage of coverage called out on that?
It is. There's a table over to the left-hand side. I think it was fifty-something percent.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, fifty-one.
But it doesn't tell you what the increase in lot coverage is from what was there.
Right. Fifty-one point nine. Okay.
And if you look at the aerial photographs, the driveway wasn't there, the addition wasn't there, so.
Okay.
There could be some qualification of increase.
I'm sorry, Jim, did you make the motion or not?
Well, I struggled, but we weren't ready for it yet.
No, okay.
Okay. Now we're ready for it. Ms. Chairman, I move that we table this closer to our September nineteenth meeting.
Okay, we have a motion.
Waiving the fifty.
Waiving the fee.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion, table, and waive fee. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, therefore, on the motion, Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
John, uh, yeah, I'm all right. John?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. All right.
All right. Thank you for your time.
See you next month. Good luck with that. Yes.
Okay. Excuse me.
Wait.
So there's a pen on the back table. Do you mind just filling out that table sheet and then bringing it back up here?
Okay. We're going back to item number four. Thank you for your patience. Bad trip out of Boston, or what?
Sorry about that. It was really bad.
All right. This out there, huh?
It stormed. Took me three and a half hours to get here from Boston.
Oh. I, I have an office in Boston. I, I understand.
It just, it's brutal.
Some days I can be there in fifty minutes, and some days I'm there in four hours.
Yeah. I, I left some of you at three-thirty.
Oh, you're in some of it.
So that's even past Boston.
So passing tunnel, you know, the bridge, I left at three-thirty, and I got here at seven-fifteen.
Oh, you made it.
You made it. That's amazing. You're safe.
I'm glad you guys are still here to listen, you know, to hear this thing.
Let me read this in. This is item number four on the new, new business agenda. Aguma D'Souza, three-eighty Fourth Street, map I-15, lot 51. The applicant seeks a variance to create a mixed-use building with four residential units and an auto sale showroom. The applicant also proposes a second-story addition waiving zoning requirements in an A2 apartment zoning district. Could introduce yourself and...
Good evening. My name is Aguma D'Souza, and, uh, it's the first time I'm, you know, before this board. So a brief explanation of what we're trying to do here, it is, uh, I've been meeting with Daniel, you know, on a planning, taking, discussing this project, and, uh, you know, and then we ended up here. So I believe it's an old warehouse, used to be industrial use, I believe, where they, they can't fish. Uh, I'm not sure if that's what was there before, but I believe it's industrial use. You know, we're seeking to have a variance to turn that existing envelope into a, a car dealer, which one is gonna be selling, no fixing, it's not gonna be a shop or garage, it's just a garage and a, you know, and the dealer, plus four units on the existing envelope. We propose an addition on existing footprint above the garage, it's a commercial garage, attached to a warehouse. So the commercial garage is gonna have a, an addition with the same footprint, which is gonna be one apartment plus a, a second mean of egress. Uh, and the other addition we require, it is on the left side of the building, which we are gonna build a open deck, which is gonna be another second, another mean of egress as well.
So the se, the, the second-story addition is both apartments or just one apartment?
Just one.
Just one?
One unit, yeah. Well, units are gonna be about, uh, the total construction there right now is, I believe it's about five thousand square feet, two levels. We are proposing actually same footprint, a little bit over six thousand square feet, two levels, uh, same footprint, except for the means, the fire escapes that we are adding, plus above the garage, which it is existing, we're gonna be building the same footprint on the top of this commercial garage. Well, units are gonna be about, uh, the total construction there right now is, I believe it's about five thousand square feet, two levels. We are proposing actually, uh, same footprint, a little bit over six thousand square feet, two levels. Uh, same footprint, except for the means, the fire escapes that we are adding, plus above the garage, which it is existing, uh, we're gonna be building the same footprint on the top of the, uh, of this commercial garage. You know, we are proposing to fully, uh, uh, bring this up to code, meaning, uh, fire panel with the full fire alarms, whole, uh, brand-new sprinkles system, everything that is needed, uh, to make this conversion.
So, explain again, four apartments.
Four apartments.
And where are they gonna be located?
Apartment is gonna be on warehouse side, which is in the back, so also, that is, the first level is gonna be, uh, it's a commercial garage with an office.
Yeah.
Plus a little storage area, they're gonna use for storage, for the dry goods or whatever.
First floor.
On the first floor. Go up on the second floor, three apartments above the warehouse and one on the top of the attached garage, which is a commercial garage.
So, it's a two-story building now?
It is a two-story, it's about, a little bit over, uh, I believe it's thirty-one feet high.
You don't have a floor plan, though, to help everyone understand this?
I do, I do actually.
That might help.
I wish this guy had done a little better job, Daniel, but that's what I have to present to you.
Oh, Jesus.
This is, I have a small one, you ready?
Small one would be better, yeah. I can visualize now what you've said, but I think it'd be good for the board.
No, that's, yeah.
Then you can explain to me, Dan.
Okay, commercial garage, is the commercial garage going to be repairing these vehicles that are here?
No, no, no repairs, no. This guy owns another, another, he's closer than, he owns another couple shops, this is only gonna be, he says, uh, it's gonna be from six to ten cars at a time, just to sell. It's gonna have an office there, no repairs, nothing, everything's gonna be done outside. If you can even repair it.
So, no garage bay at all, even if.
There is a garage bay, which is gonna storage the cars there. Like maybe two or three cars.
Like a showroom?
Like showroom.
Yeah, like a showroom, when you walk in, enter the showroom, there's cars parked there, he can probably fit about four cars on that.
And that's in the whole first floor?
It is on the first floor, under the one unit.
Of the front section.
Of the front section.
Yeah, on the front section, exactly.
Three apartments on the second floor of the back section.
Yep.
And then you're gonna put a new, cause the front part now only has one floor, right?
It does, only have one, it's high, it was just gonna.
So, the second-story addition to the front, how high does that end up going?
It's gonna be the same height, thirty feet.
It'll match what's in the back?
It's gonna match, it's thirty, yep.
All right. As they, as they marinate on use, no relief was requested for parking?
There is, there is, it shows you on this plot plan, you know, like you should.
It shows something on the plan, but the application doesn't request anything, and I don't think, I don't think the building department referenced any relief.
Probably not.
No.
If you look at it, it's show more than we do, we don't, we not, we not looking for this many parking, she showed, the surveyor showed too many. All we need is eight for the unit, it's gonna be, you know?
Yep.
And then, we're, we're gonna have the, the one bay that's gonna have the, probably three or four cars to store.
Yep.
And I'm gonna maybe couple also.
Okay, all that, all that needs to be shown. There's customer spaces, employee spaces, that's all in the zoning district that has requirements for all of these uses. Spaces have to be nine by eighteen. Drive aisles need to be twenty-two feet.
Okay.
None of that is shown on here, so you would need to comply with all of those requirements, which I don't, this plan does not meet those requirements.
I see, I see, I see.
So, you might wanna have your surveyor look at the zoning for what's required for parking, the size of the spaces, the sides for the aisles, and determine if you need parking relief. This parking, the way it's shown, does not conform to zoning.
I see, I see.
You, you have some aisles that are only six feet wide to get into a parking space.
I see.
That's not adequate.
Understood, understood.
So, you saw the last one that we just did for auto sales?
Mm-hmm.
We can even give you a copy of that plan, so you can see how they designate spaces for sale, spaces for employees, the size of the spaces, the sides of the aisles. And the board would need to see that, I think, in order to make a determination on if the use is even okay. But, that's all I have to add for right now.
The, the industrial use or the commercial use that's in that back section on the first floor, is that gonna remain as a commercial use?
It will, it will, it's gonna be, it's gonna be used like a warehouse, dry storage.
Oh, that's not, I asked if, if the auto sales was the whole first floor and you said yes.
No, no, it's only in the garage.
Only in the front.
So, there's gonna be a third use?
Which is a storage.
What's going on there now? Nothing?
It's, it's all warehouse, nothing, it's right empty.
Okay, so that's, so that means, so that means it's.
Need parking for that, too.
Most likely expired, whatever zoning relief or use for that building. So, you would then need new zoning relief to use that for anything, cause you need to include that.
It, it, let me just be clear, because I, I'm feeling two different things. Is somebody using that space currently?
No.
Okay.
It's vacant, yeah.
And you don't know how long it's been?
I have no idea, the, the owner owns it for about a year.
The denial letter says applicant seeks permission to create a mixed-use building with four residential apartments and an auto sale showroom.
Right, says nothing about the, uh, the warehousing section.
The petition.
It's, it's like dry storage.
I understand that, but if it's not on the application, they can't, they can't act on it. The application reads applicant seeks permission to create a mixed-use building with four residential apartments and an auto sale showroom.
Yeah, I thought that back building was all residential.
I thought the whole thing, no, I thought the whole bottom floor was the auto sale.
No, no, it's, it's a little, it's high, I think it's about three or four feet up on the ground, yeah.
Yeah, you get a loading dock of some kind back there.
Yeah, it does have a loading dock right there.
Oh, all right, yeah, no.
So, then, you, you're right, um, auto sales on the garage and also it's gonna be the warehouse with another, a single office. It's just for storage, no.
Cause on the plan, it says existing warehouse, it says proposed addition to the left, the small one, I don't know what's gonna be in there.
But now, let's keep in mind, this warehouse and this storage, it's for the owner purpose only, that's not gonna be rent out.
Doesn't matter.
And no customers are gonna come in.
What owner?
Uh, Delisa.
What did they do with it?
They, they, they're just gonna use to store, store dry stuff, flooring, cabinets, uh.
For what, so it's a business use?
It's a business use, but no customers.
So, that doesn't, if that, that's not addressed anywhere. And then on this plan, nowhere does it show what is the auto sales part of the building. It says existing warehouse, proposed addition, doesn't say what it's for, says a proposed second-story addition and proposed second-story wood deck. Nowhere does it show where there's apartments, where there's dry storage for whatever.
We have there on the floor plans.
Yeah, but that wasn't submitted. This, this plan was submitted.
It was never asked by, uh.
Whoa, 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 we, we have requirements for submission of plans. This plan is woefully inadequate, if you look at what's required on our plan.
But that's on your plot plan, right, it doesn't.
No, no, it's not a plot plan.
No.
It's a use plan that shows what you're doing, the, has to reflect the, the relief you're asking for, and it has to show that parking meets the, meets the requirements of the parking ordinance in the zoning bylaw. So, yes, it's a plot plan, but it serves a purpose to illustrate what you wanna do. So, your petition references nothing about dry storage.
I see, I have to add that.
So, I don't.
Have, have, obviously, you've, you've not sought legal counsel on this, you haven't spoken to him, Charlie.
I have not, I actually get the, the counsel's number, I might be reaching out to him to get some, uh, some feedback on this.
This is complex, this is woefully inadequate, um, and, you know, Director Aguiar was giving you some, some good ideas of what's missing.
I appreciate it, yep, I would appreciate that.
There's a lot missing here, you've got three different uses, we're not really reflecting those three uses.
Uh-huh.
We're not showing where what is, that plan just doesn't do it by itself unless you're starting to call things out, what parking is for what. If that's gonna be a warehouse space, what if there's three guys working on the warehouse, there's three parking spaces?
This is better to be drawn, yeah, we can't table this.
There's so many parking spaces, you need parking spaces for the apartment.
So, that you understand the law, you basically have two options. You can ask the board to vote with what you've presented, okay, which I can't say would be favorable, but I don't vote, so I can't tell you. If they do deny it, the applicant can't come back for two years. You can decide to withdraw and ask for, to withdraw and come back once you've straightened out all of these things. We can't make that decision for you, so, that's something for you to decide and request from the board, which way you would like to go.
I, I would like to withdraw, so I can make these changes, to, to do a better presentation of these, now that I understand exactly what I have to show in this, it's much more.
So, you're asking, you, you're asking for a withdrawal?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant permission to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
Motion and second, on the motion, John Frank.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes, so.
Nina, Nina will email you a set of plans, so that your engineer or surveyor, whoever it was, gets a better understanding of what needs to be shown here. As, as the chairman stated, you should probably seek legal counsel to help put together the petition. You saw that most petitioners tonight had someone that takes the reins, that knows what the zoning requirements are.
I see.
So, that way the board can at least make an educated decision on their vote.
I hope you have a safer trip home.
I think the rain's done.
We have the Tucker Street.
Next time I'll come, I'll stay, I'll stay here for the day. I'll have some of the nice Portuguese food around, you know, there we go.
Nina, do you have a withdrawal form?
I don't have a withdrawal form.
No?
No, I only have one table form left.
Okay.
You wanna, I'll get that.
Oh, just as an example, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's for the, for the, for the plans, right?
That's just.
And then, do you have a, do you have what the withdrawal form looks like? We can either, one, run upstairs and get one, or two, just have someone handwrite it.
Can we cross out the word table in, uh, on, on the form? She's got the withdrawal, uh, the.
I think that, are there different forms that we made, one for table, one for withdrawal, or is it the same?
They are different forms.
I didn't render it, we don't know how the word make it.
Yeah, we got a few minutes anyways. We have to go, we have to go over this, I'll do that.
Yep.
This way it's cleaner?
Yeah, actually, you know what, I, I can go up and get it. So, the discussion about other things, I was not able to come up with how number of petitions or that stuff.
Okay.
So, we're not gonna add anything in the discussion, we've implemented all the other things that we've talked about.
Okay.
Okay.
We were hanging out with discussion of how many petitions.
Right.
Should we consider ones that get tabled to be added to, and what is the limit, so there should be no discussion on that. Give me two minutes on that.
Dan, could he go up with you and sign it and just get it done? Okay.
This, uh.
Okay, in that case, what was the submission of, uh, receipt of correspondence?
Correspondent, too.
That's just the typical everybody in the city got it?
Um, that was, just, we've, yeah, it's just a use limitation, so, um, it's mass D E P.
This came from mass D E P? Oh, and five, four, uh, five ninety-four, that's what, oh, okay.
That's what the use limitations usually are, they're from conservation.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, don't worry about it.
Is that why that we moved, we referred to legal counsel?
That's, no, no, all you, all you have to do for this is to place it on file. It, it already.
Yeah.
It already went to them?
It already went.
They're just letting us know that they recorded it at the rest of the years.
That's fine.
Okay, okay.
I think they have to for. Conservation for mass D E P like standards.
So, this receipt to record, item number sixteen, which Dan was just talking about.
Wait, so, we need a motion to place on file?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to put it on file. And, and just to request, this has already gone to legal, they, they've sent this to the city, too, or, um, upstairs, or?
Uh, it, I don't believe it needs to go to legal.
No.
Ninety-nine point nine percent positive does not need to go to legal.
Can we ask legal if it has to go to legal? We have a, a motion, second?
I'll second.
Second. Uh, on that motion, John Frank.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. Uh, discussion, uh, and review of the, um, zoning board and appeal regulations that Dan was just talking about. We had adopted or instructed to move forward with a number of different things at the last meeting. There's nothing additional to that at this point in time, so, at this point, there should be no additional discussion unless there's something that one of us wants to bring up, or Nina wants to bring up.
I thought we were tabling the discussion so that, um, we could see if we wanted to, uh.
I think he was talking about.
We wanted to talk about number of petitions.
Limit, yeah. And he said he hasn't done anything with it.
Motion to table, then I would.
I think it's an open, revolving, uh, fluid.